All right, good afternoon, everyone. Let's get our work session started. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Webber.
Here. Most approved, agenda is proposed.
Talking. In favor.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we have an agenda. First up, first item on the agenda is an update on the University Avenue project. So, Eric.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer. Staff and the consultant have been working on University Avenue here for about six months now. We've had a community input meeting and a couple of meetings with the Complete Streets Committee, and then we've been reviewing the information put together by the staff and the consultants and have had a number of meetings. And we're at the point where we have a design recommendation for the mayor and council. Larry Wheeley from AECOM is going to present kind of a brief overview. After his overview, then we have a technical memo that we've put together with more information to support the recommendation, and that you can look at when you have a little bit more time. And then finally, Noel and I have put together a few points about our thoughts and the support of this recommendation. So I'm going to turn it over to Larry first to kind of give us an overview.
All right. Thank you, Eric, and thank you, mayor and council, for allowing us to present. We'll be looking at the recommendations that we'd like to present, the typical cross-section, some of the aesthetic and enhancement options, accommodating the transit system, speed limits, then intersection design for the project. And then, to close that, we'll just look at some of the general project information for University Avenue. Some of the review process that Eric just mentioned, we have been meeting on approximately every two weeks with city staff, with representatives from engineering, planning, traffic operations, and public works, along with AECOM staff. And we also had several meetings with other stakeholders, with Met Transit. We've met a couple of times with the Complete Streets Committee. We've been having several meetings with utility companies. We know that's a significant issue, is dealing with utilities that are out there. We also had a public input meeting back in March where we solicited input from the community. We've also had many phone calls and communications with different property owners throughout the corridor. Just as you all know, this project will take University Avenue from Midway Drive at the city limits with Cedar Falls almost to Highway 63. The DOT reconstructed part of University back when they redid 63 intersection, so we'll just go up to that new pavement at that location. First thing is with the typical cross-section, we're looking at reducing the number of lanes from six to four. That meets the needs for the current and projected traffic volumes, and by reducing the amount of lanes out there, that gives us space for some of those enhancements that we'd like to put in. It also reduces the amount of right-of-way and property that needs to be acquired, and it also will reduce the cost for construction as well as future maintenance of the roadway. From University, on University from 63 to Tunis, we're looking at 12-foot lanes with two-foot slope curves on both sides, and then a 16-foot median that would allow the introduction of left-turn lanes at the main intersections. This also includes a 10-foot multi-use trail, bike path on the south side, and a five-foot sidewalk on the north side throughout the corridor. We also took a look at what a five-lane section, how that would work in the corridor. That is something that would allow better access to the driveways in the corridor, and in particular, we looked at the area from Tunis Drive to Midway where there's a number of driveways. That does increase the business access. It does have the potential to increase the number of crashes. We did take a look at some similar corridors in both Ames and Corville where they had made this transition, and both of them, both those city engineers highly recommended that transition as being a successful project in their communities. So we would be looking at something from Tunis to Midway as a five-lane section. This would allow the driveways to continue to operate as they are, but also give left-turn access for the businesses in that corridor. And that would go up to Midway Drive with the city limits of Cedar Falls. For the aesthetic improvements, we talked about the shared-use path, and one of the key points for that shared-use path is the connection to other trails in the community. That would include the trail that Cedar Falls is constructing right now as part of their project. It would also include a connection to the Green Hill Road Trail at the interchange to connect to that trail, and then also to the existing Sergeant Road Trail closer to Highway 63. So we would be able to have a link between those areas. We also would look at a sidewalk that would create connections, not only along the corridor, but also make sure that we connect to the local businesses and neighborhoods that need that access. We've heard mention that the Hy-Vee area and the old Kmart area would be an area that we would definitely want to make sure we have that sidewalk connection. The YMC area already has that, so we just make sure that we can connect to the neighborhoods with that sidewalk. As far as aesthetics go, and in particular landscaping, plantings, some of that streetscaping work, we are looking at developing a plan that would accommodate the future installation of those items as funding becomes available. I think we all know funding is tight for this project, so we want to make sure that we have the plan out there so that when funding becomes available, we can incorporate that and not do something that prevents us from putting those things in in the future. Accommodating the Met Transit system, there's approximately four main drop-off and pickup locations in the area, at North Star, at the EPI Building, Falls Avenue, and then Amesboro. Those are the four highest ridership areas. There's some existing bus shelters at Falls Avenue that we would want to reincorporate. And these locations were identified as part of the ADA improvements project, some of which is going to be on the agenda later tonight for construction. We'd be looking at taking those locations and taking care of them as part of the University Avenue project. The key areas that we looked at would be the area near the North Star Community Services, that's near the McDonald's on University across from the Hy-Vee gas station, and then also at the North Star Community Services, which is on the other side of Green Hill Road, being the two key points that we would make sure those are the areas that would accommodate the bus stops. Speed limit on University Avenue. Speeds really are dependent on a lot of factors: safety, capacity, the number of driveways, expectation, how many intersections there are. Right now, at 45 miles per hour, University Avenue is operating at a fairly safe rate. It has a crash rate that's about 60% of the statewide average for a similar roadway. So we think that it's already operating at a fairly high level of safety. From Midway Drive to Tunis Drive, the number of driveways in that area really dictates a slower speed, and we think that that combined with the five-lane section, it makes sense to go to 35 miles per hour in that section from Tunis Drive to Midway Drive. And that, again, provides a logical transition. The Cedar Falls project is going to 35 miles per hour in their section, so that gives us a logical transition to the 35 miles per hour. The other thing we wanted to point out is the area from Tunis Drive to Highway 63 has controlled access and frontage roads for most of that area. Those frontage roads allow the turning traffic to operate at a slower speed. It allows the mainline traffic to travel at that higher 45 miles per hour speed. So we would recommend keeping that 45 up to Tunis, and then at Tunis Drive, which is the road there at the McDonald's, we would transition to 35 at that point. Intersection design. The 2011 traffic report did a study looking at roundabouts versus signals, and that study found that at most of the locations along University Avenue, the signalized intersections operated better than roundabouts. And we found that construction of roundabouts will have some fairly severe impacts to right-of-way and to access in most locations. We also know that roundabouts generally have increased safety characteristics and reduce the severity of crashes, but we also know that the University Avenue currently has crash rates that are below the statewide average. This is a chart showing the operations of University Avenue with signals and with roundabouts, and this is a slide that was also shared at the public input meeting back in March, and it shows that with the exception of Progress in Amesboro, the signalized intersections operate at a slightly better level of service. We did look at Progress Drive as one of the intersections that would be more efficient with a roundabout versus signals. It does have a lower cost of roadway construction, but it does have some fairly severe right-of-way impacts. It would require total acquisition of a couple of the properties in the northeast and southwest quadrant, and also a lot of parking lot acquisition from the Walgreens and then the new strip mall that's in the other corner. So we've got about 1.6 million in right-of-way acquisitions at that location over and above what we would need for signals. We also took a look at a roundabout intersection at the Green Hill Road Ramp Interchange area. It does slightly increase the cost of construction in this area because we would need to reconstruct more of the side roads, and does have some additional right-of-way impacts, although in this area, that does not impact any businesses, their buildings, it would just be land acquisition. The Traffic Operations Department did a study which showed that putting the roundabout in would have minimal impact on the traffic progression, but we know that there's an increased delay over the existing ramp intersections which operate with no delay for University Avenue. This would increase the access for Hackett Road, but it would also put increased traffic on the Hackett Road area south of University. Based on the cost and the operation of the roadway, our recommendation is to go with the traffic signal alternative. There's lower costs, there's reduction in the overall travel time and delay, which leads to a reduced fuel consumption and air pollution, and then also, because of the less right-of-way impacts, it has less impacts on the businesses in the area. We've gone just to some general information of some of the things that we've looked at. The Midway Drive intersection and coordinating that with the city of Cedar Falls. Right now, our plan is to, as part of the first stage of the project next year, we'd be looking at putting work into our project that would go into the city limits of Cedar Falls. That would include work that the city of Cedar Falls is not doing as part of their project, and that would require an agreement between the two communities for those costs to be shared. And basically, we're drawing a line right down the city limits line, and paving on one side would be our costs, and paving on their side would get transferred to them. The traffic signals at that location, we would just take those costs and split it right down the middle. And we've been working with the city of Cedar Falls for most of the past three or four months to try to get that agreement in place for construction for next year. Funding and costs. Right now, our total project cost estimate is at $36.4 million, and that includes the typical cost for construction, the roadway paving, storm sewer. It includes the sidewalk and the shared-use path. It includes street lighting for the corridor design, and then the right-of-way acquisition that's needed for the project. It does not include things like sanitary sewer, that would come out of sewer funds. Water main work that's needed would be coming from waterworks. It does not include the bridge work. That's something that will need to be done at some point in the future, but that's a long-term project that's not part of that initial investment. And then it does not include enhancements beyond the sidewalk and the trails. As you know, the funding was $28 million from the DOT, so we continue to search for savings opportunities, whether that's delaying the bridge work, minimizing the Green Hill Road work, or looking for grant opportunities for additional funds. Schedule. We're looking to present recommendations to you tonight and also have a vote from the council in the near future, continue that design and right-of-way acquisition work through this year, looking to let this project for construction in early 2018, with construction starting next spring. And just from a staging standpoint, we know that our initial priority is going to be the stretch from Midway to Amesboro, looking at doing that as the first stage of construction, and then moving on from Amesboro to 63 in future years. So that's where we're at with our recommendations, and I'm sure we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel.
Mr. Chairman. What are the roll acquisitions? I thought we were going to be, by going to four lane, we minimize that.
We are minimizing it, but in some areas, we would need to construct the recreational trail where there's a right-turn lane. We are keeping the three lanes there with the right-turn lane added, so there are some areas where we need a little bit of right-of-way, but we're minimizing as much as possible with that reduction. But it's really minor with the traffic signal alternative.
And when, on the trails, and maybe this is more for Noel, the city, or Eric, the city doesn't, the city maintains the trail, the property owner doesn't have to shovel the trail in the wintertime, is what I'm trying to say.
I think that's accurate, but that'd be more for...
But the sidewalk, he has to. The guys on the other side will have to maintain access in the wintertime on those sidewalks, on the new sidewalks.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer. On the sidewalk, some of it's going to be between the frontage road and the main road, so that would be a city responsibility. There may be some that's in front of business where the adjoining property owner would have to maintain it, but we've got to work through all that.
We would do the sidewalks, some of the sidewalks.
Well, if it's between the frontage road and the main road, we would have to, yes.
Then one last question. If we're doing all this design work, and would it be prudent to include in your design the enhancements that we're going to do someday now? Wouldn't that just be a small cost in the grand scheme of things?
There would be advantage to doing it now if the funding's available.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer. Just to add to that, we've got to get into preliminary design and be working our way towards the final design. We'll figure out what those things are and then come up with some costs, and then see how we, most likely, we'd be able to include some of that. We just don't have real good numbers on that yet. We're not that far along, so...
The cost of the design, you mean?
Well, no, the cost of actual enhancements.
Oh, okay.
You know, plantings, other lightings, benches, all that sort of thing. We'll get those numbers together and then see where we're at.
Okay.
And that's where we may need to look at some additional funding sources or something, but yeah, we'd like to include them in the project if at all possible.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. Couple things. Can you talk a little bit more of this intersection design recommendation? So, do I read that correctly? You're proposing to have signalized intersections?
Correct.
Okay. How many of those will there be?
I think we have those at seven and a half because we're paying for half of the Midway Drive intersection.
How many are Cedar Falls going to have? Do you know?
I can say.
And your presentation says lower overall costs. I'm assuming that refers to right-of-way acquisition, that kind of thing that wouldn't happen.
Right.
Reduction in overall travel time and delay. I thought the signalized was more of a delay than roundabouts.
No, the signals have less delay overall when compared to the roundabouts.
Really? Even though roundabouts never stop?
They never stop, but they do impact the side roads differently. It's really, if you slide back to the table, there's really very little benefit one way or the other from an operation standpoint, so it really comes to, the few seconds one way or the other probably isn't the deciding factor, but if you look at the increased costs, it's whether or not that change in design and those benefits is worth the additional cost to right-of-way.
And so that then also carries over to the reduced fuel consumption and air pollution because, again, I thought roundabouts were a plus, signals were a minus, but you're saying it's minimal, whatever it is?
It is minimal either way, and in general, I think the key is, there's a lot of rolls of thumbs out there for roundabouts versus signals, but you really need to look at each case individually to make sure that you have the right answer.
Okay. And then just real briefly, and I don't know if you know this yet, but conceptually, can you kind of give us an idea of how, what you're thinking we would do, how that would compare to Cedar Falls? I've heard some concern about if Waterloo's portion of University Avenue were to be more similar to, let's say, Kimball Avenue, kind of Spartan-ish compared to what Cedar Falls is doing with all the, as I understand it, kind of ornate things they've added. There's a little bit of concern about a real distinct difference when you cross the city boundary. Are you to that point yet to be able to talk about that as far as bike trails, walking trails, all the other stuff?
I think the recreational trail on the sidewalk is, in our minds, a given, that that would be included as part of the project, and we will be doing, as Eric mentioned, preliminary design for those enhancements and aesthetics, hoping that the funding becomes available to do that so that we don't have, we don't want a sudden drop-off or a change where it's obvious that we've changed city limits. We want it to be a seamless transition, but we've also been directed by engineering to be very cautious with spending the money that we may or may not have. So we're taking a very cautious approach, hoping to find either the savings or additional funding to be able to pay for those.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Anyone else? Yes.
Yeah. I was wondering, is Cedar Falls doing the five-lane configuration, like from Cedar Heights Drive down to Midway, like we're doing from Tunis to Midway?
No, they're doing a separate raised median, but they do have three-quarter intersections and left-turn lanes to access mid-block between the signals. So it's a different design, but it provides some of that mid-block access.
Is that going to be a design that's confusing to the motorists?
I don't think so. It's a, the five-lane section is a common design, and there's other places in town that have that, so I don't think that's going to be a significant concern.
But I mean, switching from that over to what Cedar Falls has?
No, I don't see that. I don't see that as being, that's...
I think that's part of the transition. Wouldn't that be part of the transition for Waterloo to Cedar Falls?
Well, I think with the appropriate signing and the transition, we would be able to handle that.
And then, Councilman Schmidt had brought up about the difference that theoretically, I know I was led to believe, in roundabouts versus signalized, and you put together this package here from Midway to Tunis and then Tunis down to 63. And were you figuring that at 35 miles an hour, 45 miles an hour? I mean, how were you figuring that? What speed limit were you going with to get those numbers?
That was figured based on a speed limit of 45.
Okay, so if you reduce that to 35, wouldn't those numbers go up for roundabouts then? To the better? If the speed limit from Midway down to Fletcher Avenue was a consistent 35 miles an hour, wouldn't the numbers for roundabouts that you have on that one chart go up versus at 45 miles an hour? Because going from 45 miles an hour down to where you're supposed to approach and go through a roundabout, you go from 45 down to 10 miles an hour, I think, is the suggested speed limit through a roundabout. Wouldn't that be, create significantly better numbers for roundabouts at some locations?
I think that's possible, but I think it would have the same effect on the signal side of the equation, so both of them would be improved. So it wouldn't just affect the roundabout analysis, it would affect both the roundabout and the signals the same way.
But if I'm going 45 miles an hour and I come up to an intersection with a red light camera, I'm going to put on my brakes, and isn't that less cost-effective than if I'm approaching a roundabout at even at 45 or 35 miles an hour, if it was 35 miles an hour? Wouldn't that be less wear on the car and a better fuel efficiency if I'm just slowing down rather than stopping from a 45 mile an hour speed limit?
That's possible, but we did not compare 45 for signals versus, and 35 for roundabouts. So we'd have to...
I guess you would have.
We'd have to check and see what those numbers would give. I don't know, based on what we've seen, that it would make a significant difference. The numbers are so close as they are now, I'm not sure there'd be a big change one way or the other with the numbers.
And I understand that there are a lot of intersections here, you know, eight intersections really, and that some of those just roundabouts won't work at all. But I guess I'm going to go back to that little dream thing that I had for Green Hill Road.
Right.
And I still don't understand why we have that bridge there when that could be filled in and we could have a roundabout there where the intersection is with Green Hill and with University Avenue, and we don't have to worry about taking care of another bridge for the, well, rest of my lifetime for sure, but into the future. And that leaves us just one bridge that we're worried about because I think you're still taking out the bridge over the railroad, the old railroad, correct?
Correct.
And I know that when we talked about this before, there had been, you know, the numbers that would increase the initial cost, but overall, in the long run, it would lower the cost, wouldn't it?
It would, in the long term, lower the cost, but the initial investment would be sizable to do that. And I think the reason that was initially put in there as an interchange was because University and Green Hill both carry a significant amount of traffic, and there would be a, that would be a, whether it's signals or a roundabout, it would create significant delays on both roadways to have a controlled intersection there rather than the ramps.
But that's dependent upon the type of roundabout you put in there, isn't that correct? Because you can put in two- to three-lane roundabouts that seem to work very well in other cities, bigger cities.
Sure. It's doable, it would just, it would introduce delay where there is none now.
Okay. A couple other things. One of the things that you said was Amesboro to 63 would be future years. What do you mean by future years?
What we're looking at is constructing the, first phase would be the next two years to take the project from Midway to just past Amesboro Avenue, and then when that's complete, then do the stretch from Amesboro to 63 in the next phase of the project.
Well, I guess I just want to add that I would hope that the enhancements would be and that you would go into, and I hope somebody is looking at funding because I can't imagine what Highway 63 would look like. can't imagine what Highway 63 would look like if some of those enhancements hadn't been put in there. I think that's a very important component of University Avenue. I'd hate to see something in stark contrast, like Councilman Schmidt had mentioned, to on the Waterloo portion versus entering Cedar Falls with the enhancements and stuff they have there. I would not want to see that. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I just have a question, maybe a comment, not, I don't know for sure who to direct it to, but are we going to have more community conversations beyond this conversation, you know, an evening somewhere that's going to talk about these projects as we're moving forward and getting closer?
These projects or this project?
This project.
This project.
University Avenue, in the community.
You want another meeting on University?
Right, in the community.
I can tell you what we have in the design agreement is, obviously, we'd like to bring these recommendations back to council, probably in a couple of weeks, have you vote on that. Once we have, consultants then can really get going on preliminary design, once preliminary design is done, we'd have a public meeting to present that. People can make comments about that, there'll be a lot more detail that people can see and make comments about that, and there's still time to make some adjustments in that at that point. And then ultimately, sometime late fall, early winter, we'd have a public hearing on the project, actually putting it out for bids, so there'll be a couple more opportunities.
And we also, my people, we have a Facebook page or Facebook link for those that may not be able to be here. And you're saying we'll have another opportunity for a public meeting as well as part of the agreement.
Right. Yeah, we continue to put things on the various social medias that we have.
Well, I think it'd be helpful to have a community conversation before we get too far into it. I mean, just other word, the perception, you know, to eliminate any perception issues.
Okay. And that's part of the contract. The challenge is not having anything to even show people. So the first meeting was to gather people's thoughts and ideas, take a look at some of the, what people are saying online, and then once we meshed that all together, we came back today and had this public presentation, and then once we move a little bit further, then there'll be another presentation, and we can take some recommendations over where, if you want to have that, so people can get some more input and see exactly what's there. And I think Eric also described that there's still some opportunities for some adjustments at that point, but we needed to get something, maybe not in concrete, but something to get out to folks. Any other question? We got past the 4:15 at times, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one final comment. I know from the different meetings I had and the people that I have talked to about the University Avenue project, they feel they've been shut out of the conversation, and they'd like to have more public meetings so that their input is known.
Should have invited them today.
Well, I didn't think that public was invited to participate in this.
Well, as Eric said, we'll have another meeting, please invite those that are interested. We did have some public meetings, so I don't want to give the perception on camera that we haven't had any type of public meeting for people to participate, so we will invite the public, take the steps when we do it again to reach out to the many folks that you said are interested in coming to the meeting. So, thank you. Next, we have a shared services discussion, where we're at in our committee. There's been questions by council about this committee as well, so this is one part overall. So Kevin, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin Blanchard, Executive Director with Intercog. I've got Brian Schoen here, he's going to get into some details regarding wastewater. I wanted to do a real quick overview of where we're at with shared services. This was an effort that was initiated by Mayor Hart and Supervisor Magzman about a year, a little over a year ago. It's being facilitated by Intercog. Meetings have been at our place, we started in the spring of 2016. The mission statement, formally or informally, I guess, I don't know if we ever really officially adopted this, but basically, Shared Services Committee shall strive to identify opportunities to jointly provide exemplary service to our residents and customers while decreasing costs, implementing efficiencies, and offering responsive customer service whenever possible. So that's kind of been the framework of which we've been working under. Some of the original members, and I say original because we've expanded a little bit in one of the areas, Blackhawk County, the City of Waterloo, City of Cedar Falls, University of Northern Iowa, Hawkeye Community College, Cedar Falls Community Schools, and Waterloo Community Schools. Those are the organizations that have been getting together several times to just look at what types of things should we be doing that we can do together that would reduce costs, improve those efficiencies. I would emphasize that the work, we're just kind of, you know, we've been at it for a year, but the work is really just getting started. This is a, this is a long-term process and an ongoing process that we need to continue to work on. Areas of opportunity for sharing that we've identified, one which we're going to talk about a little, quite a bit more detail today, but one was human resources. We have a subcommittee that has gotten together, all the human resource folks within their organization have gotten together, we're looking at some joint training opportunities, those types of things. Had a little bit of a bump in the road when human resource person changed at the county, but reached out to the new one, and there's a willingness to continue on there. And I know you have a new human resources person here, so we're excited about the opportunities there, just to share in training. I mean, what was obvious when we were all there is like, we're all doing these things kind of in a vacuum a little bit, and there's opportunities, particularly in training, whatever it might be. So the other one that came up, and we have representatives from Cedar Falls here, Ron Gaines, Stephanie Sheets, and I've totally forgotten the other gentleman's name, sorry about that, but they're here to, showing the partnership that we've formed in working on this issue, and one of those issues is regionalization of wastewater. That's a large issue. It's one that we feel as a committee that there are opportunities, and now might be a good time to pursue that a little bit more. A long ways to go on that. And then certainly, there's some other opportunities that we'll be identifying as we, as we move along. So I'm going to have Brian come up and talk a little bit about where we're at with the wastewater, what we're proposing, and then we'll open it up for questions. So, thank you.
All right, thanks, Kevin. I'm Brian Schoen with the Intercog office. And as Kevin indicated, we're going to talk a little bit about one of the first initiatives of the Shared Services Committee, and that is wastewater treatment. As we were having the meetings, initially, this topic seemed to always rise to the top in terms of one of importance and discussion. And we met, then, the subcommittee, we cut off a subcommittee of the larger group, and we met in September. We had representatives from the contiguous cities in the metro area, all of which have concerns, I think, to some degree about wastewater regulations and compliance and those kinds of other issues. And we talked just a little bit about existing needs, some of the future needs, and then certainly some of the flexibility associated perhaps with the regional system. And then one of the comments that came up was, well, you do know that there was a 1973 study that was done that actually proposed something very similar, and that looks like that. It's quite a dated document, obviously 40-plus years old, but there's still relevance to that document. As we start to dig through that, there's a real brief table of contents, I have a copy of the document, we have it in PDF if you're interested, but certainly, it was a document that was put together right here by Bryce Patritis, which, again, the forerunner to ACOM, that really outlined a framework for a metro sanitary sewer system. It looked in detail at the existing systems at the time, it also looked then at some of the existing systems with regard to recommending future regionalization, and it also looked at some of the legal implications and staffing needs, as well as it made some recommendations. Again, a very large study that was done a number of years ago. And so what we did was look at, this is just a real simple map, apologize for the colors are a little faint, but you can see the locations of the facilities, the contiguous cities that we were looking at, with the idea being then that they could, that sewage treatment and sewage would be then conveyed then to a single location, in this case Waterloo's being the largest, largest population base, perhaps having capacity to handle some of those kinds of things. And so that was the push forward in that 1973 study, even before the current system was in place. And we carried that forward. And what we did then as a committee was, we reached out, did a series of small research projects, talked to other communities, trying to determine viability in Iowa. Again, we didn't have a lot of models to look at back in 1973, and so what we did was make that outreach. We think that wastewater is going to continue to be a challenge for almost all the communities that we work in, and one of those that came up was the Des Moines Metro Wastewater Reclamation Authority. Again, relatively close, formed underneath a 2080 agreement, some 17 local governments or sewage treatment districts that have put themselves together. We had good conversation with their engineering firm, and really just gleaned a sense that, you know, perhaps this is something that is possible, again, all through committee meetings, and committee decided then, well, what if we updated that 1973 study? So we actually approached ACOM, they put together a small proposal to update many of the elements in that '73 study for us, and then based, or primarily focused on whether or not it's a viable concept still, some 44 years later. So again, we're not looking at the operational or legal or financing issues at this point in time, we're just trying to determine whether or not the concept is still feasible. Again, you'll see in handouts, we've got handouts of that proposal, it's a very short proposal, it's got 10 tasks to it and a relatively short timeframe. It's $75,000 in terms of costs, $70,000 for ACOM, and then five for Intercog to help manage the project throughout. Intercog then is willing to sign a contract with ACOM to move the project forward, the cities then would subcontract or contract with Intercog then to reimburse for those expenses. Timeframe is relatively short, looking at November as our timeframe end. Some of the benefits, of course, of regionalization is that we hope that it'll help determine this, the viability of an actual regional system as we move forward, that's kind of the whole point of the study. We think it offers long-term solutions and regional approaches, addresses capacities as well as regulatory compliance concerns that may be out there, future costs can be shared, and then obviously, so can then the environmental benefits that go along with regionalization. So with that said, we'll take some questions. We certainly, as Kevin said, got a number of people here. Our next steps, as we see them as a subcommittee of that sharing group, would be to attempt to establish that contract and then let ACOM move forward with that study, with the idea being then that there would be presentations back then to the local member governments. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, Council? How are we going to pay for, how are we, City of Waterloo, going to pay, what are we paying for this study?
So I think I can speak for the City of Cedar Falls in one of our meetings. We've got five communities that are involved in this. We looked at, well, how do we, that $75,000, how do we split that out? We could go population, but I think it was tentatively agreed that Waterloo and Cedar Falls would split that 50/50. If we looked at population, I think Waterloo would have a bigger chunk of that money, and Cedar Falls would have less, but they've stepped up and said, you know, we'll go half and half with the, with the, with the City of Waterloo. In terms of where those funds for the city would come from, that, that would need to be determined by, by you. I don't know what that source of revenue would be, Tom, for that study.
Are the other cities going to pay, or just us and Cedar Falls?
Right now, it's, the proposal is Waterloo and Cedar Falls would, because there's, the biggest players in this, obviously. Now, and if, and it's determined that this is feasible, which we think it is, and then we start getting into the financing and all that, then the other cities are going to certainly be brought into that process and be included in that in terms of fees and all those types of things. But we're, we're a long ways away from that at this point.
Our plant is fairly modern, at least it's, we don't have to rebuild the whole plant like everybody else has to. So I'm kind of curious why we have to shoulder half of the cost of a study that's going to benefit Cedar Falls, for instance.
Well, I mean, it's, you have to kind of, I guess, you'd need to look at it long-term. I mean, that's where the benefit for this comes to play, and I think that cooperation and, and I know both cities, and Ron's here, maybe you can address Cedar Falls a little better than I can, but both cities are facing some regulation and some mandates that are coming, they're going to be really, really costly. So there's benefit regionally in the long term. Short term, a little tougher to show that, I would agree with that, but long term, I think it's definitely some benefits.
Let me ask you a question, Steve. So at the point we're at right now, is our plant, will we have to make some changes in the future potentially, or will we not have to make any changes, please?
Steve Holmberger, Waste Management Services Director. The, our plant, we're currently, by our latest NPDS, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, permit, required us to do a nutrient reduction study, which is currently underway, and it will be completed in April next year. We hired Strand and Associates and Randy, the lead person is in the audience as well. But as part of that, we don't know the exact numbers, but we are going to have to make improvements, proposed improvements through time to our plant to meet those future requirements for nutrient reduction limitations to our facility. So exactly what that is, and I think, I don't know, Randy, we don't really have a cost ID at this time, do we? I didn't think so. So we currently, we've, they've had a kickoff, we've started looking at it, but we are going to have to make improvements to our facility as well in the future. Exactly what that cost will be, it will be multi-million dollars, I am sure, but I don't know the exact number as we speak.
All right, so this is, this is an opportunity to put it out before council of her conversations for years about working together, partnering together, taking a look at the long-range scope of our facility. We know there's improvements that will need to be made, but ultimately, it's up to council if you want to look down and see if this is something we want to partner on this venture. But it was my opportunity to put this out there in front of you, to see exactly where we can go from there. We're a long ways away from any decision being made, but taking a look at the feasibility, I think it's important, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
But one of the things was, are there different locations that are being chosen if this would occur?
I mean, that's possible, Pat. I mean, that's the idea of looking at this study that was done, and I mean, that's 40-some years ago, so there's that possibility that, I mean, I don't know yet, I guess, and I'm kind of a transportation guy, I'm not a wastewater guy, so I'm getting way out of my element here a little bit, but I think that's the intent of the study, is to identify, is it using Waterloo's existing plant, or is it some other type of situation that might be done, so.
And that also goes to Councilman's Lynn kind of point, and that would, you know, our, our system is modern with major changes that will need to be made in the future, but it is not, I don't believe, cost-effective for Waterloo right now to take a look at the building of a different plant. But I guess that's what the study will show, because we still have capacity, we still have some opportunities, but this may be a way that we can partner together with our local communities, our smaller communities, to see if we could make those improvements to have a shared, shared facility. But, you know, the study will be able to tell us some of those same things that you said, or is it feasible, or if it's not feasible for the cities at all to do this.
And... Well, I just think there's value in looking at regionalization and a whole host of things, and I think that a study may provide some good data, some information, and we'll just see where it goes before we end up spending a lot of money on potentially a failed project.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Kevin, this, this just has to do with sanitary sewer, it doesn't have anything to do with storm?
Right, sanitary.
Just sanitary?
Okay.
From all these five different communities?
Right.
So everybody's sanitary is going to one facility?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? All right. So I'm pretty sure we'll have some more discussion and then we'll get back, but this was the first opportunity to put this information out for council to see if it's even the direction you want to take. So thank you for showing up tonight and thank you for putting the presentation together as well.
Thank you.
All right. All right. All right. This one yours?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, thank you. It is 4:35 and it is our next, next work session. And we have Mr. Antoine here from Buxton to give us an update and report on exactly where we're at and, and what's going on. So it's your floor, sir. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for you guys' time this afternoon. As Mary mentioned, my name is Antoine Long with the Buxton Company based in Fort Worth, Texas. Definitely glad to be out here this afternoon to just give you guys kind of an update regarding the partnership, where we are and some of those retail conversations, you know, what are we doing, what have we done so far? And also some of our next steps as far as getting some new retail into the city, also partnering with some of those developers that are actively working, some of the commercial real estate space out here in Waterloo. So just to give you guys an overview of what we'll be covering briefly this afternoon, quick background on Buxton, our position in the marketplace of both retail, the retail sector and public sector, looking at our methodology, our Buxton approach as far as how we're analyzing the market, how we're identifying those retailers that'd be, to be a great fit in this community. Also looking at some of our scout and market insights, the data that we have available not only to talk to retailers, but businesses, different industry types that are out there as well. And then lastly, just want to wrap up in summary to talk about those next steps, what other tools that we do have available, not only on the recruitment side, but the retention side to support some of those existing businesses here in Waterloo. As mentioned, our retail experience, we started actually in the retail space over 20 years ago, helping with, you know, retailers with their site selection decisions, helping them open up new locations, deterring them from opening locations in potentially poor performing areas. But you'll see here, you know, some of the brands that are on that list, Marriott, Firehouse, Sports Clip, some of the brands that you guys are already have here in the community and some that are planned to be developed here soon. So we'll touch on a couple of those here late in the presentation, but just know with our experience, very knowledgeable on how retailers think, how they operate, how they want to expand. So leveraging, leveraging that, understanding that knowledge base to support those public sector clients when we're looking to recruit those new retailers. So when we talk about the public sector support, we work with over 750 communities. Again, just talking about the background, you know, when looking at the business retention, primarily retail recruitment, how can we get that new grocery store, how can we get that new department store, or even a pharmacy, or even gas station? So understanding what are the needs, what are the leakage areas that we can identify, but also identifying what is the best type of retailer that we need to go after. So with our methodology and our partnership, we've already uncovered some of those insights. The team is actively working toward getting those retailers here into the community. So looking at kind of the, finding our retail matches that we kind of uncovered in late fall of last year when we just partnered with the city, want to understand what's going on in, in the city limits of Waterloo, but also what's going on in the drive-time trade area. When we talk about, you know, some of these, these four kind of icons here at the bottom of the screen, when we look at our methodology and we analyze the community, we analyze the trade area, we're going to look at that consumer profile. You know, typically, a lot of folks are familiar with demographics, but we like to take it, take it a step further and look at those psychographic characteristics. What are folks spending? How are they spending? How are they living their lives? And how does that integrate with the type of retailers that we want to identify for the community? Drive-time trade area, that speaks to understanding consumers as shoppers, not necessarily, you know, being faithful, just within the city boundaries. I know you guys will like that, but to understand that folks are typically shopping in terms of minutes. What does that 10-minute, 15, 20-minute drive time look like for a retailer? When they plant their store here, they know that they can not only pull from Waterloo, but you know, those surrounding communities as well. So being able to think like a retailer and understand that if we're looking at a 20-minute drive time, if we're looking at a 30-minute drive time, what retailers like that consumer mix that we're seeing in that profile? What, what retailers like to see those type of businesses, those hotel developments, convention centers, colleges, school districts? All of those kind of go into the mix when we talk about retail market conditions and we really understand what's going on in Waterloo. So from there, we take this step further and then understand what are those retailers that we need to target? Now, the listing of retailers that you see on the screen here, those aren't actually the retailers we're working with right now for confidentiality purposes, but just know with the partnership, we've identified 20 retailers that the team is actively working to recruit, a nice mix of restaurants, some apparel brands, some fast casual options. So we'll uncover some of those conversations here shortly, but again, want to give you guys kind of an overview, how we get to those retailers, how we understand that trade area, how we understand that consumer profile. So when I talk about getting beyond demographics, we at Buxton know that demographics only tell a piece of the story. Looking at these two gentlemen here on the screen, demographically, you know, they're identical, same age, same income, both married. And now if we take that a step further, we want to get beyond those demographics and get to these psychographic data points. So as those gentlemen look the same, you know, demographically, them as consumers are quite different. You have Ben Shaw on the left, he shops at Sam's Club, he eats at Chili's, he only has one kid and, you know, maybe, you know, likes to stay at home to watch Netflix, whereas you have Tom King on the right, shops at Costco, has three kids and prefers actually going to movie theaters. Now, if I were a studio movie girl or some type of concept, movie theater concept, I would likely want to be around these Tom King folks, these Tom King type of households. So now at Buxton, we can identify where are those clusters, clusters of consumers that are, you know, very in line to that retail type. You know, as, again, as that movie theater type, you don't want to get caught up into being around too many households that look like Ben Shaw, but we're able to quantify where are those Tom King households and how does that affect, what value does that bring to your site as a retailer? So again, when we're looking at the Waterloo market, we're able to uncover some of those insights, able to uncover some of those consumer habits. And so this is actually one of the main segments, if you will, and one of the main household types that we're seeing here in the Waterloo trade area. E20, no place like home. Brief description about these folks, upper-middle-class, multi-generational households in suburban, or ex-suburban, ex-urban areas. Now, again, this is helpful information when we talk to retailers, not only demographically to understand some of these key features about these folks as well. Smart shoppers, contribute to charities, tailgaters, financially informed, conservative values. This is helpful insight to understand, should I go after a Target, should I go after a Walmart, should I go after a Costco, should I go after a Sam's Club? All these different household types have a certain spending profile, consumer profile, that again, we're able to quantify and identify what are those best retailers we need to go after. So this is again, some of the insights that we were able to uncover last fall. The introductory phase of the process is to understand who is living in the market, but also where. You know, when we look at the trade area, we identified three main areas, three focus points that we wanted to, you know, bring in these new retailers that might be, you know, pro, pro-retail, you know, those shovel-ready sites. So looking at the three sites here, again, worked with Noel and the team and staff, looking at Logan Plaza being one of those hotspots that we want to look at for retail development, downtown Waterloo, around the Tech Works Campus redevelopment area, what does that look like for new retailers that want to be a part of that mix? But also Crossroads Mall, knowing that there might be some infill opportunity at the mall, but also some outparcels opportunities as well. What retailers like to be in that type of space? And again, able to identify those on that top 20 list that we match the city to. So again, when we talk about that drive-time trade area, that standard, that immediate trade area we're looking at for each of these sites is about 20 minutes. So what you're seeing on this map visually is again, what is that 20-minute drive time in any, every direction around that site for that retailer to plant their flag? What do those demographics look like, but also what do those psychographic characteristics look like as well? So again, working with staff, even also working with some developers to look at some of these hotspots in town. I think University Drive was another area of focus that we were able to provide some information on. But again, these are kind of our three main areas of focus that we're looking to, you know, again, attract that new retail to Waterloo. Now, some market insights, and again, Waterloo, Texas is not a thing, I do want to preface that, we are looking at Waterloo, Iowa this afternoon, but just some high-level market insights that we're able to uncover, looking at that 20-minute drive-time trade area. Demographically, the population north of 122, daytime population close to about 150,000 in that 20-minute drive time, again, getting out of those city boundary limits. Total households, a pretty impressive number, close to 50,000, that, you know, retail follows rooftops, so again, seeing close to 50,000 is a great number to show. The employee, you know, what does that look like? You know, that industry type, what does that workforce profile look like? Number of these retailers, especially on the fast casual, your dining concepts, they want to see that daytime population for that lunch crowd, for that evening, you know, happy hour crowd perhaps. So being able to quantify, what does that employee count look like? Average household income there, close to 62,000 in that immediate trade area of 20 minutes? And then that median household income drops to about 48,000. And that employee workforce split, about 55 and 45% for white collar and blue collar professionals, again, in that 20-minute drive time. As we take it a step further beyond those demographics, those spending habits, those, to quantify what are the, what are those purchasing habits in the market? Again, leveraging all of our data sets that we have in-house, over 250 data sets, I think to you guys, the most familiar name would be Experian, utilizing those folks for, you know, some of the information that we're able to collect the data on, we're able to quantify, what is that average consumer expenditure in that 20-minute drive time? So we're seeing about a 40, 47,000 for each household out here, but if we were to aggregate, you know, add up all those households in the market, we're looking at close to 2.3 billion with a B in total consumer expenditure. Pretty impressive number, again, when you're talking about the spending power that's going on out here in the market. Again, with the data that we have available, we can break down that consumer expenditure a little bit more, if we want to understand what does that look like for the apparel, apparel brands, clothing options, close to 67 million as far as apparel. If we want to break it down for men's and women, you see there that split or that difference at 14 million for men's and 27 for women's. Grocery, we see that this often, or these type of developments often spur what we call, you know, major developments, so being, being able to identify, what is that grocer that's expanding in the market that we can bring in and maybe add some junior anchors to that space? We see that grocery demand close to 139 million in that 20-minute drive time, pretty significant. And sporting goods and also home furnishings around, out there, about 6 million and 5 million respectively, looking at that consumer expenditure profile there. Now, as we talk, pivot more toward, you know, the retail activity that, that we have going on with, with the partnership and since we really started, you know, contractually back there in October, October, again, we, we started the analysis, understanding what does that consumer profile look like, what does that drive-time trade area mean, what are those retailers we want to identify? Then probably late, late October, we were able to identify who are those best retail matches for the, for the community, for the city. And then toward early December, we actually create what we call market validation materials so that Noel and his team can reach out directly to these retailers with information that talks in that retailer language, language, talks about area draw, talks about competition, the customer presence, the demographic presence, truly communicate intelligently to these retailers that, hey, it's a very viable option for your brand to be out here. We're working with Buxton, we've identified you as a great match, let's talk about some of the sites that we have available out here in Waterloo. So we want to essentially serve as an extension of your staff here and with Noel and his team. I'm just, you know, the one day-in, day-out person, kind of that, you know, if Noel or Adrian want to reach out to me with any questions about, you know, some of the retailers, we can talk, but just know, back and forth with over 150 folks there, analysts, you know, other account managers to support you guys as well. And more, more importantly, just to evolve that strategy, retail is a very dynamic industry into, into which, you know, you know, something can, or retailer can be expanding in such aggressive growth mode, quarter one, quarter three, that changes totally to where they're not opening any new stores at all. So want to stay ahead of that, you know, you know, want to be in front of all those industry news, articles, share, sharing any insights we have with Noel and his team, letting him know that, hey, we've heard X, Y, and Z about this retailer, you might want to approach, you know, so-and-so a little bit differently. So again, just providing, you know, ample amount of guidance and additional research, not only to Noel and his team, but also some of the regional developers out here as well. We had a great opportunity, I was actually out here, April this year, to, to meet with Noel and his team to talk about the upcoming trade show that was taking place in Las Vegas, the International Council of Shopping Centers. This is the largest retail trade show that takes place annually, you know, over 36,000, I think, folks were in attendance, your brokers, developers, public sector folks, you know, folks like Buxton on the data side of things. But being able to connect with some regional developers from Waterloo out there to aid in their conversations, knowing that they have particular sites that, that they're working on, to also be able to provide them with some data on, on demand as well. So just know, if there are any, any interested developers that, you know, we may want to reach out to, we're here to support them as well out here in Waterloo. Now, let's get to the actual activity. You know, you guys probably want, want to exactly know what's going on with the actual retail conversations. Wanted to highlight a few of them this afternoon, very active, or I would consider very highly interested in the community as far as developing a site out here. And now you guys already know that Marriott is opening in the fall of 2017, again, our exclusive hospitality partner, the only, you know, hotel chain that we're working with, so we're glad to see that they'll be opening a location here very soon. But now, looking at some of the actual retail conversations, we have a sub sandwich shop that we've identified and contacted that has high interest in Waterloo. I believe they are working through some site selection internally to exactly see where they want to be in Waterloo. But again, a sub sandwich shop that is expanding pretty rapidly across the country, great to see that they have some interest out here in a market like Waterloo. Quick service restaurant, another brand that we identified that has high interest here in the market as well. They are seeking several sites, but actually probably want to focus in on one initially. Again, with that conference we had out there in Las Vegas, had some conversations with a couple of developers about this particular entity. This retailer was actually out there at the show, so again, with that big trade show that occurs, all of your retailers out there, your big box, your fast food, so we actually had a conversation with these folks to truly say that they are interested, again, working out some due diligence internally about how soon they'll be opening up shop out here. Lastly, we're looking at a coffee shop that has some interest in Waterloo that, that I believe Noel and his team just requested, or they actually requested some site information, so Noel and his team actually sent some information over to them, a few different options for them to consider. Again, another brand that we identified, so great to see that, you know, some of the brands that we did actually match you guys to have some great interest in the community. Now, a number of the folks that were on the list were, were, you know, more focused on the sit-down dining restaurant opportunities. We know that's a high interest for the community, looking at the redevelopment activity that's going on at downtown near the Tech Works Campus, but also the outparcel opportunities near the Crossroads Mall. We had a couple of conversations with the retailers that said, you know, hey, you know, thank you for reaching out, we appreciate the information, we're just not truly in that expansion mode right now. Give us maybe, you know, 18 months to where we'll, you know, reconsider a market like Waterloo. But just understand, the retail, again, retail industry is quite dynamic to where you want to get engaged with them today, to where you're moving up on that, you know, development pipeline for them internally, to where when they are ready to develop, Waterloo is already on that list, they've already qualified you guys as a great market to open up in. So a number of, you know, those dining, sit-down options that we did identify, again, just they're, them internally working through some due diligence to actually market and actually open up shop out here. So just know, I think that is a positive approach, but I think what's more positive and the great thing about the community is that you guys do have such an active developer network to where folks are actively working to bring in new retailers, maybe first-to-market options to the community, so.
Antoine, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
And then I'll let you get through the presentation, but when you mentioned the opportunity in, where is it, at Las Vegas this year?
Yes, sir.
Would it be best if, if we wanted to be absolutely aggressive to not only communicate with more developers locally, but do we need to have Adrian or Noel, or do we need to facilitate and make sure that our developers are there on a larger scale? What's the, and you can set up meetings as well?
Absolutely, yeah. Great, great point there, you know, with the partnership, again, we typically have a great presence out there at the show, you know, booth space, to have those conversations, to have those meetings with retailers. Was actually talking with Noel beforehand to talk about the, the big show in Vegas, but also there are some regional shows that take place throughout the year. The next one is actually upcoming in, at the end of September in Chicago, it's a two-day conference, but again, more regional focus to the, you know, the Midwest retailers that, you know, those developers, those brokers that might be working the area, but I definitely agree that it is something that you guys should definitely consider, having them actually out there, having a presence to go alongside with those developers in those meetings. But yeah, that, that ICSC regional show in Chicago, I believe, is the last weekend in September, so definitely something that's upcoming, something that we are working toward as well to strategize and plan for as well. Let's talk a little bit about those next steps, and again, that regional show is part of that conversation, how do we prepare for that, but also how do we stay on top of these retailers we've already identified? Great point there, you know, with the partnership, again, we typically have a great presence out there at the show, you know, booth space, to have those conversations, to have those meetings with retailers. Was actually talking with Noel beforehand to talk about the big show in Vegas, but also there are some regional shows that take place throughout the year. The next one is actually upcoming at the end of September in Chicago, it's a two-day conference, but again, more regional focus to the, you know, the Midwest retailers that, you know, those developers, those brokers that might be working the area, but I definitely agree that it is something that you guys should definitely consider, having them actually out there, having a presence to go alongside with those developers in those meetings. But yeah, that ICSC regional show in Chicago, I believe, is the last weekend in September, so definitely something that's upcoming, something that we are working toward as well to strategize and plan for as well. Let's talk a little bit about those next steps, and again, that regional show is part of that conversation, how do we prepare for that, but also, how do we stay on top of these retailers we've already identified, knowing that you guys have, again, such a dynamic real estate community, a lot of concept plans are out there, a lot of site plans are out there, a lot of these retailers are visual, so they need to see, you know, some dirt moving, some planned development, so working to nurture those relationships, understand where they are within their real estate development plans, how does Waterloo fall in line within that? Is that a six-month activity, 12-month, 18-month, 24-month, whatever that is, we want to work through that appropriately so that, again, we're in the right space to when they are ready to expand. This is the market for them to look to. Now, the upcoming year of the partnership, what we want to do is kind of refresh the analysis, run the numbers again, how does the, you know, the workforce change, how does some of these new developments change, you know, the mix of retailers we want to identify? So what we'll be doing is adding a net 20 retailers that we can go after, and we can focus those retailers maybe all on the downtown, or all on crossroads, to kind of spread it out all over the development sites. But again, with, as we move into the next year, we want to understand, what are you guys' objectives? What are you guys' initiatives as far as understanding what type of retailers you want to go after? We know dining and sit-down is a big focus, but maybe entertainment is something that we really want to focus on, so we can skew the list to maybe have some more of those guys included to say, Noel, let's, you know, you know, we know you're a busy guy, we know you have a lot of things going on, let's, you know, focus your attention on these top 20 that we know will be a great fit. Again, as we rerun those numbers and see who would be a great fit, looking at that customer profile. So definitely want to continue those conversations weekly by weekly that we have with Noel and his team, just to understand where are we in conversations, how can we support a little bit more from our Buxton data perspective? Now, as we pivot a little bit toward the retention piece of the partnership, just know that this is not all about, hey, let's bring in new retail, but we also want to support some of the existing businesses, so we have a number of reports that are available within our scout platform and our Buxton partnership to support and understand the household and workforce consumer profile, what is that supply and, or what is that surplus and leakage analysis? What does that look like for the different retail categories? What are those different consumer propensity as far as merchandise preferences that we're seeing in the market? And also, just, you know, traditional demographic data that some of those developers and, you know, businesses alike can utilize. So just know, we have this information available, likely, you know, you'll probably want to channel those questions up through Noel, and we'll definitely have a report ran for you guys to answer whatever questions you guys might be seeking. Lastly, as we kind of wrap up, looking at LSMX, local store marketing tool, this is actually a new tool that we recently developed, past probably six months or so, more so on our retail side, to support those retailers that, you know, have those franchisees that need help with their marketing efforts, whether it be on a monthly, quarterly, annual basis. This is a tool that's leveraging this same type of analytical data to understand those psychographic characteristics of the trade area and understand based on the business type, so if there's a local, you know, mom and pop coffee shop, we can quantify where those households that they need to be targeting. Typically, you know, those businesses, they're doing a blanketed approach and just hitting the whole street block, whole zip code, it might not be the right type of consumer, customer that might even come into their store. With our data, we can analyze and identify, as a coffee drinker, you know, Mike Jones or, you know, Jim Jones over here at 123 Main Street, he's the coffee drinker consumer that you need to be reaching out to. You know, Kathy Stewart across the street, maybe not the coffee drinker that you need to be sending that direct mail piece to. So again, being able to be a little bit more intelligent with those marketing efforts. So this is something, again, that we've want to roll out to the community free of charge. I think we're going to try to work with at least 20, up to 25 businesses for free that can utilize this information, utilize the marketing services. The only thing that they'll be having to pay for is, you know, whatever marketing campaign that they want to use, whether it be Facebook, direct mail, email ads, we have, you know, five different channels that they can utilize and really market their business to. So just wrapping up, looking at the Waterloo and Buxton partnership, number of resources available, we know that, you know, retail is definitely an evolving industry, but we want to stay on top of it, you know, with any new development that you guys have going on, Noel definitely keeps us abreast of all those insights so that we can, you know, support those developers, support those property owners, support the city with any initiatives that you guys might have. So if there are any threats that we might hear from some of the retailers that might not be expanding, we'll look to replace those on the list and see who might be the next best option for you guys to go after. And then lastly, as mentioned before, I'm here, phone call or email away, but also a number of folks back at our home office and forwards to support you guys as well. So we're only about six, seven months into the true recruitment, you know, piece of, you know, of the partnership, so that's very, a really short time, but to have four retailers interested, of course Marriott already somebody you guys have been working with prior to, but again, one of our retail partners, glad to see them going in, but three other, you know, retailers that are interested within these first six months. And what we want to do, continue those conversations, nurture those relationships, and really build a pipeline for success out here in Waterloo. So I just want to wrap up there, if you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just one quick one, but one of the things I'd probably like to take a look at is what other cities are doing as well to kind of close that deal or close that niche? You know, I know some cities may have some different types of programs out there that we may not necessarily have.
Sure.
But I'd like to hear some best practices on what other folks are doing so that we can make sure we're as competitive as well.
Mr. Welper?
Just yesterday, my wife and I were having this conversation, we were out at the Crossroads Shopping Center about 1:30, and generally, that would be quite full with people shopping from surrounding communities and such coming in. I would say there is more store clerks than there were people shopping. It seems like anybody that we talk to anymore, they're doing, oh, they're shopping online.
Sure.
With the exception of restaurants, don't you think online is killing our local stores?
Sure, I mean, you can definitely look at that, you know, Amazon online effect as far as, you know, that e-commerce, omnichannel approach. Looking at those, I would say apparel brands, they seem to be struggling quite a bit, but definitely to your point, when you look at retail as a whole, you do have those dining concepts, those entertainment concepts, those grocery concepts are still expanding, fast casual concepts that are more focused on that experience than just, you know, can I go in quickly and buy a pair of shoes or a pair of pants? You know, some of those mall owners and developers, they're thinking of ways to repurpose that. So again, part of the strategy is knowing that there are some brands out there that could possibly be closing, what are some other ways or some other brands that we can bring into the mix that may fill that space? So that's definitely something to consider. Looking at the first-year matches, I don't think we had too many apparel brands, knowing, again, you know, dining was a big focus in year one, but that Amazon effect is real, you know, I think 9% of the bottom line of a lot of stores is that online, those online purchases, and that number's only going to go up from years to come, that's definitely something we at Buxton are being very much so mindful about.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have a question going somewhat similar to that. Do you have data on which states you pay tax on an online purchase versus no tax?
Honestly, we probably don't have a ton of information on the online data, we can look into it for you, but probably not, you know, state, we can look into the state-by-state breakdown.
I know there's been some discussion in Iowa to start looking at taxing online purchasing, and I would assume other states are, you're doing. My other question, if I can, is do you focus more towards the independent owner, the 50 less franchises, and then 50 and above franchises as your targets?
Yeah, we have a...
Or a mix, or?
It is a mix, it is a mix, because, you know, in our database, we're looking at over, you know, 5,000 retailers, they can be from your big box, national name brands, but also more of your regional concepts that may just only be in, you know, the Midwest or just Iowa and the state, or even just, you know, some of the neighboring cities. With the data that we do have available, if there are any concepts that you guys are considering, you know, that may be over there in Cedar Falls or even Cedar Rapids, wherever, we can do some comparative analyses and see exactly, what does that makeup look like for those folks? How can we tell the story that, yes, there may be three locations in Cedar Rapids or Cedar Falls, but there also needs to be a location here in Waterloo? How can we depict that, again, looking at that drive time trade area consumer profile and those demographics? So yes, there is a mix at both national and regional players as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, sir, I was just wondering about downtown.
Yes, sir.
I mean, the inner, the immediate downtown area, and one of the things that we don't have is an urban grocery.
Okay.
But we sure got a space. It used to be, it's vacant now, it's a public market.
Okay.
And do you ever try to gear what you're doing to a space that's open, given the demographics that are hoped for for downtown Waterloo, including people who will walk and bike to that type of an urban market? Because we sure do need one at 327 West Third Street.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely look into that, you know, question specifically, you know, working with Noel. I know, I'm just thinking of a few, you know, brands off the top of my head, so we'll have that conversation offline and just look at, what is the square foot? You know, another thing that we look at in the data and analysis, look at, you know, what is that preferred square footage for those business types? And then look at what's going on in the market, whether it's, you know, the acre to land that's available or an existing building that we can infill. So that's absolutely something we can look at. Grocery focus, I know there are, you know, a number of grocery stores that are looking at more downtown-focused concepts, smaller footprint stores, so that is something we can look into.
Well, that's great, and I hope to hear something soon.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? I think it's important, you have a question?
No.
I think it's important to understand that this is just one tool, we need to take a look at all scopes, whether it's from, you know, manufacturing industries, whether it's for retail, but we need to take a look at the whole gamut and try to prepare ourselves with the tools for us to be competitive in recruitment overall, but this is one tool out of several different opportunities that we're trying to take to fill spaces, so.
Motion for adjournment.
Check it.
All right, you'll have to come back when it's winter, so you can...
Oh, boy.
So you can get the real feel of the city.
It's 101 degrees this morning, so we'll see.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have a human resources committee meeting at 5:05, we need to, good stuff, and so those that need to leave.
Let's call our human resources committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the role, please?
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion, a second on the agenda, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. We just have one request today.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lynn?
I move to approve the request from the Chief of Police for authorization to appoint two police officer recruits from the current civil service list.
Second. We have a motion, a second on the request, questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion, a second on adjournment, all in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned, thank you. Let's call our finance committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the role, please?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of the minutes and the agenda, the minutes were July 17th, as proposed.
Second.
Motion, a second on the agenda, minutes, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Take travel requests, that's... That's a gentleman's approval, go ahead.
Officer Erie, Brahm, Shaw, Wilson, and Richter to attend a class on firearm instructor recertification in Johnson, Iowa on the November 16th of 2017, amount not to exceed $825. Officer Herkman to attend class on defensive driving tact instructor recertification in Des Moines, and that date is 11/15/2017, amount not to exceed $165. Investigator Gergen to attend class defensive tactic instructor recertification school that is in Des Moines, Iowa as well, 10/18/2017, a class not to exceed $165.
Did you take the six refunds, too?
Refund request, an amount of $837 for garbage fees billed in error on the property located at 1310 Inglewood Avenue. A refund request, an amount of $30 for garbage fees billed in error on the property located at 1155 Amherst. Refund request, the amount of $13.30 garbage fees billed in error on the property located at 1621 East Fourth, while contracted with a private hauler. A refund request, an amount of $31.50 garbage fees paid on vacant property located at 811 Moier Street. Refund request, amount of $98 for garbage fees billed in error on the properties located at 803 and 811 Sony Drive, while under contract with a private hauler. Request to advertise, accept sealed bids, and sell one used concession stand shed no longer in service.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the new business, any questions on any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Pre-oths?
Mr. Chairman, pre-othsations to expand over $1,000, building maintenance $5,975, replacement of defective breakers at Five Sullivan Brothers, or Five Sullivan...
Replacement of defective breakers at five Sullivan Brothers, or five Sullivan Convention Center. Building maintenance, four thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars, eighteen cents for replacement lighting at East Fifth Street parking ramp. Culture and arts, eight thousand dollars. Shipping of artworks by Haitian artist Pascal Monnen to be exhibited at the Waterloo Center for the Arts. The cost, cover shipping of works to and from Port-au-Prince, Haiti. Fire rescue, fourteen hundred eighty-nine dollars, twenty cents. Purchase of rescue randy training mannequin. Leisure services, fifteen thousand dollars. Reconditioning and replacement parts for Young Arena HVAC units. Police, twenty-one thousand dollars. Fiscal year eighteen uniform supplies. Police, twelve hundred ninety-nine dollars. Hardware, annual maintenance agreement for Waterloo Police Computer Servers. Sanitation, two thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, fifty-five cents, plus seventy-five dollars shipping and handling for the I O box for number one five one one zero two, which runs the controls for the truck. Sanitation, three thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars, fifty cents to the remand differential for garbage truck number one five one two zero two. Sanitation, four thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars, sixty-seven cents, plus seventy-five dollars shipping and handling, uh, for hydraulic pump for garbage truck number one five one five one two. Sewer department, two thousand six hundred twenty dollars, seventy-five cents to replace two two-inch trash pumps, suction and discharge shows for lagoon cover pumping. Street department, three thousand two hundred thirteen dollars, fifty-seven cents, plus seventy-five dollars shipping and handling. Muffler and converter assembly for the one nine three B zero eight dump truck. And street department, eleven thousand sixty-two dollars, seventy-six cents, plus two hundred and fifty dollars shipping and handling for the conveyor assembly and belt.
Second. Okay, we have, uh, a motion and a second on the pre-oths. Any questions on any of those items?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask, um, so for the, um, Convention Center, we're, we're gonna go ahead and we have another expense on that, is that, is that right?
I, I thought the same question. Um, who, who would answer that?
I guess the question is, at what point do we-
Stop paying.
Do we stop, yes.
Yes.
Mark Bosin, building maintenance. Uh, this was found with the last breaker replacement. We did a sixteen hundred amp breaker. We found these two breakers are welded on, they will not shut off. We felt from a liability fire safety standpoint, we needed to replace these, and we had started this process before we got as far as we did. We just want to continue through with it before we turn it over.
So, Mark, are you aware of any other items at this point in time that we're gonna be responsible for?
Not at this point in time. This should pretty much take care of everything electrical that we've got at this point in time. Everything else would be under some minor contract tune-ups, that type of thing.
This one's clearly a safety issue.
This is clearly a safety issue.
Okay.
Michelle Weiner, Chief National Officer, I think the primary point is that the closing hasn't occurred yet, so the property still belongs to the city, so while we may not know of anything today, something could happen tomorrow.
Right.
You may see us having to do more things prior to actual transfer of ownership of the facility.
Sure, okay. Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if we could get an explanation on the eight thousand dollars for the shipping of the artwork, I guess?
Is Kent here? Uh, no, but-
Sean Page, curator of One of the Symphony Arts. Um, the eight thousand dollars is actually covering, uh, kind of a two-way transit of works by Pascal Monnen, which is a young contemporary female artist that's working in Haiti, who is actually gonna be coming to Waterloo for a week for the exhibition, not only to, uh, kind of install the artwork, but also will be providing kind of, uh, kind of lecture sessions, uh, not only on our collection, uh, but also giving a gallery talk and working with, uh, some of the folks here in the community over the course while she's here. So is there a specific question?
So the eight thousand dollars, is it just the cost of the shipping of the art, or is it also her expenses?
This is just the shipping of the artwork. Well, it actually will cover, um, the packing, the air transport from Haiti to, uh, Chicago. It will cover any of the, uh, insurance as far as for the art, the value of the artwork, along with the, um, custom fees for handling and kind of working with the airport itself.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Anything else? Okay, uh, all in pre-oths? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Uh, we have three budget light item amendments, which are unfilled at the City Clerk's office, and this week the bill's payment, three million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and three dollars and ninety-seven cents. That's three comma four six five comma six zero three point nine seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on bill's payment. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, bill's paid.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment.
Second. Motion and a second on adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you. Let's get this council meeting started. Good evening, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
All right, thank you so much. We have a full council. Uh, it is time for our moment of silence, so if you would all, uh, please stand, or you can sit, it's your choice, and join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Uh, this evening's pledge will be led by Eric Dawson, City Engineer.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Uh, we have a number of items that need to be corrected on hard copy only. Uh, those of you who have electronic copy, it is correct. Uh, we have five items that have been added as an emergency to accommodate the upcoming event. Uh, the number, the first atom, uh, item is, um, one A fourteen is a resolution approving a request by KBBG FM to hold a parade on August twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen, from ten AM until twelve noon, beginning at Yegs Park and traveling on Barclay, Newell, Mobile, Sumner, and Fourth Streets, and ending at Sullivan Park. Second one is item one A fifteen is a request from Waterloo Homecoming Association to close the one hundred block of Adams at the beginning block of Webster and the two hundred block of Ankeny Street to hold the Waterloo Homecoming Event twenty seventeen in Sullivan Park. The third one is the request from Waterloo Homecoming Association for variance to noise ordinance on August sixth, twenty seventeen, from nine AM to eight PM in conjunction with the Waterloo Homecoming Event to be held at Sullivan Park, including the use of a PA system, together with the recommendation of approval of the captain of the police services. The fourth one is item one A seventeen is a request for variance to noise ordinance on July twenty-ninth, twenty seventeen, from ten AM to twelve PM in conjunction with the committee building rally invisible women's march, Our Lives Are On The Line event, to be held at Lincoln Park, including the use of a PA system, together with recommendation of approval of the captain of police services. And lastly, item one B four is a motion to approve the application for fireworks display at the Red Carpet Golf Course in conjunction with the Columbus High School Class of Eighty Seven on Saturday, July twenty-ninth, twenty seventeen, at nine thirty PM, approximately about twenty-five minutes, and also the approval of the minutes of July seventeen, twenty seventeen regular session as proposed.
Second. A motion has been made with a second. Questions? Madam Clerk? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda in minutes. I would like to call up Ms. Evelyn Russell. Please.
Uh, what a great honor, uh, this evening, um, for, uh, the recognition of, uh, Evelyn, um, uh, and this is in appreciation of forty years of valuable and dedicated service to the city of Waterloo, July eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. And so, I know she may not look like she's been here forty years, but she has been here, uh, serving the citizens of Waterloo, uh, working hard with her coworkers to make a difference, um, does it without a lot of attention, um, but just focused on the job that needs to be done at hand, so, uh, we would like to present you, uh, with this plaque this evening and say thank you so much for all you've done and be an example to all of us, uh, for dedication and, uh, support for our citizens. So I know you have some words.
Yes, I do.
You know what? So she didn't call in, she gets about three minutes.
This journey started forty years ago at the Civic Center, when it was called Conway Civic Center, and, uh, in that forty years, I've been able to work in five different departments, worked with eight different mayors, and some of those years, there were no computers. We hadn't even heard of them yet. Uh, a lot of paper and pencil and calculators. Thank you.
All right, all right, so let's give Evelyn a round of applause. All right, thank you. All right, and next we are doing oral presentations, and we did have, uh, Ms. Terri Stevens call in earlier to discuss historic preservation, so if you would please join us at the podium.
Terri Stevens, Waterloo, Iowa. While I would like to commend the city for its collaboration-
Ms. Stevens, you have sixteen twenty-nine acrimony, right, so I can-
Waterloo, Iowa.
All right.
While I would like to commend the city for its collaboration with JSA on renovation efforts in the Walnut District and the commercial development in downtown Waterloo, something is missing, and that something is development on the east side. I do realize some development is taking place at Logan Plaza, but that is hardly enough to meet the needs of this area of the city. Waterloo's master plan of two thousand and three and other plans have severely neglected to equitably include the east side in both community and economic development ventures. An often heard comment is, we can't force businesses to locate on the east side. That is true. However, if the city would invest in beautifying rather than creating eyesore's, chances are the east side would have greater success at attracting more businesses. Since the advent of urban renewal in the late sixties, Waterloo has been in the business of paying particular attention to some segments of the city while simultaneously ignoring others. Although I recognize the fact that the Walnut District is part of the east side and also needs and deserves recognition and assistance from the city to preserve its neighborhood, so doing remaining areas of the east side. Almost a year ago, I approached this council requesting a moratorium to halt escalating demolition of homes and buildings on the east side in order to preserve the remaining cultural and historical integrity of the triangle as well as other sections of the east side. To date, no one on the council has expressed any concern or any interest, so I am back today to reiterate that request. This evening, if it follows through as proposed at our meeting last week, the Historic Preservation Commission will make a request to write two proposals. Both have the significant potential to make a difference on the east side of the city. One provides an opportunity to conduct a survey of the triangle, and the other provides an opportunity to put forth constructive efforts that will positively impact underrepresented populations in Waterloo. The east side is a prime area for redevelopment. Highland has been designated as a historic neighborhood. The Dunsmore House and Hotel President are both listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Mount Mariah Church was recently named to the state's most endangered places. Antioch Baptist and Payne AME, the two oldest black churches in the city, and Saint Mary's Church, the worship center for the five Sullivan Brothers and their family, are in the triangle. All should be declared national landmarks. Raths, which the city seemingly wants to reclaim, has a distinction of being a leader in the fight for workers' rights, equal pay for women, and home to one of the country's first interracial, interracial unions, Local Forty-Six, UPWA, and UAW eight thirty-eight. What is the connection? All of these properties are on Waterloo's east side. That makes the east side a perfect partner for the two aforementioned grants and future grants as well. Once U-City representatives start recognizing the hidden potential in grants, grants for preserving African-American historic places, grants for sacred places, grants for underrepresented and marginalized populations, and other grants that can contribute to community revitalization, restoration, and recovery, and are willing to put forth the effort to obtain these grants, community and economic development will thrive throughout Waterloo, not just on the southeast side of the city. Tax incentives for rehabilitation, support for homeowners and property owners to receive assistance for beautifying their home, and efforts to decrease crime reduction can become realities and will be clearly visible in revitalized neighborhoods. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, is the fact that residents on the east side will be able to see the fruits of our taxes working in our neighborhoods. Paula Moore from the State Historical Society of Water, of Iowa, recognizes not only the architectural assets, but also the rich historical and cultural assets in Waterloo, and has stated she and her office are more than willing to assist with capturing some of this money while it is still available. The question is, what are we waiting for? The question is, what are we waiting for?
Next person I would like to share.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. The effort to repossess the Rath Administration Building brings up the question of how was the contract written in the first place? Was the potential buyer researched extensively? Before the sale, by whom? Why was this extended several times until September 2014, and now almost three years later, we are taking action allowing another three years of potential deterioration, which would deter any new potential buyer? This brings to mind the Five Sullivan Brothers Center. What recourse other than court action costing the city money to sue is in the contract? Was the buyer of the Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center researched extensively? How was the contract written? Is there a completion date or a forfeiture clause protecting the city, holding the city harmless? And no provision for extension? Seems to me with this Rath problem arising, these would be important to know before we sign the deal, which we've already done, for any deals going forward. What also sounds familiar is the different corporations, LLCs, set up by these purchasers and the purchase of this building. So, a case against the new owner, if needed, would have to go through federal court, as we see in the paper about Sioux City. Hope you did better this time. Another comment is, as far as the University Avenue Meeting for Public Input, we can't speak at a work session, and public media includes radio and newspapers, not just the other social medias that these people, that really, the millennials don't seem to pay attention to, but we older folks do. I'd like to see, I'd like to have seen a public input meeting where we can speak before the presentation happened tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else I would like to address the council?
Forrest Dillou, 1725 Huntington Road. I would like to share with the mayor and council a newspaper article that was sent to me about a week ago. And I sure wish we could read that in the paper today, what was in this article. The headline says Waterloo's Tax Rate, the Lowest of All Iowa Cities. And if you read that, it's a number of years ago. I think I was one year old when it was written. That tells you it's old. And down at the bottom, it tells how they got to this rate. It was done with increased property values and cutting in expenses. And I think you folks should have a challenge put to you to do the same thing, increase values and cut taxes. If we don't cut taxes and we don't start taxing everybody, you know, this has had 50 years of TIF, downtown, 50 years of TIF. 50 years ago, you started letting people not pay into the general fund. And when you stop paying into the general fund, you start bleeding off the rest of us. I've mentioned it a number of times. If we don't start getting the tax dollars out of all of these projects, you're going to continue to burden those, and our property values go down because people don't want to live here because of the high taxes. Read the article, do whatever you want. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion...
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make.
Yes, sir.
Something positive about our police force. I was at a stoplight this week, and I was watching a policeman interact with appeared to be a homeless person there on the corner. And I don't have the officer's name. I should have went up and asked him for his name, I suppose. But in general, I think it's our commitment to community policing, because what he did was, it was probably 85 degrees at least out, so the policeman went into his car and grabbed a bottle of water and went over and gave this guy this water. And I just thought, that's totally a positive way to police our community, and hats off to whoever that policeman was, and those who have kind of bred that idea of a positive relationship we can have with our community. Second comment I would just like to make, just follow up on last week's conversation, even though, on the convention center, even though I had to abstain, I do support it 100%. I support moving our convention center to a good developer, even if we have to pay out some money to do it. I think that puts us money ahead. I just would encourage us to make sure that we fully vet whoever it is, that we get the information that we need to make sure that we're on solid ground with this developer. Development agreement would be good to see, bank commitment letter, so when he's able to actually put the money into the project. Letter of intent from the Red Lion Hotel. It'd be good to see if he's going to personally guarantee it, if we could actually see what his personal financial statement looks like, and then maybe the properties that he's currently, in his current portfolio, make sure those are up to standard and would match what he's going to do for us here in Waterloo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion, receive and file oral comments.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Oral comments have been received.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's items 1A through B3 with corrections, and also the bill's payment this week, $3,465,603.97. That's 3,465,603.97.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. Questions, council? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
All right, those items carried. Could someone take number two under public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the asphalt emulsion bids, in conjunction with the city's recycled asphalt paving program.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda, going a second time?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk, no objections on file.
There are no comments on file.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right.
Like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
That item carries.
Make to make a motion, receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye.
We received one bid, and the engineer's estimate was $210,275. Our one bid was from Vituminius Materials and Supplies LP of Des Moines, Iowa. Sorry if I messed that up. And I took my best stab. And the total bid amount that they provided was $133,750.
Like to adopt a resolution approving awarding bid to Vituminus Materials and Supplies LP of Des Moines, Iowa, in the amount of $133,750 for asphalt emulsions, in conjunction with the city's recycled asphalt paving program, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. That motion has been made with the second.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sir.
Just a quick question. I'm wondering, do we, how far in advance do we know where this material is going to be used? And is there a list, or is it a projection, or what?
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. We do have a list in the first two streets, our Big Rock Road and Fairview. Those are the main ones we're going to start on right now.
Okay. Will there be a list of other places that it's going to be used on before?
There will be, and I can get that to you if you'd like.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. We had a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
That item carries. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally located at 1606 Williston Avenue in the amount of $10,005 to Roberto and Florin Tina Castro.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Well, we got one.
Oops, sorry.
Todd Obedall, 124 Amity Drive. This is a public hearing, and I'd like to ask points of information on this. I was told that this is a 657A property. Is that correct? Point of information. Point of information, has there been, has there been a court decision authorizing the transfer of this property and specifically transferring it to this individual?
All right. Do you have some other questions? I can take them all right now, and then they can answer.
Okay, well, these are, these are points of, points of information, and I'd like to have them answered before I make my comments.
Mr. Zella for whoever's in 657A.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. The city of Waterloo filed 657A to take possession of it, so that was completed, and we are now in the process of selling it to the individual and the council. That is what this hearing is for.
Is there a court proceeding that we had to go through to get to this point?
We did for the 657A process, yes.
Okay, my question, there's nothing in the posted online notice that this is a 657A property. I just, I found out about that secondhand, and there's nothing in the, in what is the notice in regards to any sort of court proceedings. And it said, in 657A subsection 3, it said, "The court shall require the person selected to demonstrate the ability to undertake promptly the work required and depose security for the performance of the work." This is a requirement of Iowa code, and I would like to say that these codes of Iowa need to take place before we transfer the property. This isn't in any way a disparagement of the individual selected to take possession of the property. It is an asking to adhere to the codes of Iowa, and I would ask that this property transfer not take place until these procedures have, have been completed. Thank you.
Until we've gone to court to acquire the property?
According to Iowa code, that the court must approve the transfer of property.
And, you know, we won't go back and forth. That's why I wanted to ask, ask for you to ask the questions upfront. Did we go through a court proceeding to get this property?
Yeah. Dave Zella for the city attorney. That's, that's the wrong code section for what we're doing today. We're operating under 657.10A and 657A.10A. And what you're going after is the .3. That's an entirely different ballgame. Once we get title of the property, we're free to do with it whatever we wish. In the first half of 657A, that doesn't deal with 10A like we're dealing with, there are those restrictions. You did read that correctly, but it's not for the circumstances we're here for today. We took it under a different code section, subsection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zella. Appreciate that. For going forward, notification that if any properties are being disposed under 657A, I'd like to, I think it'd be in the public interest to have them in the public record.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to make some comments on this item, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, move to close hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution authorizing sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally located at 1606 Williston Avenue in the amount of $10,005 to Roberto and Florin Tina Castro, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution approving development agreement with Roberto and Florin Tina Castro, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Said agreement.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
All right, that item, that item carries. Congratulations, Mr. Castro. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Number four is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of a public hearing. That's the request by Jason Grimm to purchase city-owned property generally located adjacent to 157 University Avenue in the amount of $2,000.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak, speak to this particular item on the agenda, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally located adjacent to 157 University Avenue in the amount of $2,000 to Jason Grimm, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
That item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Jason Grimm and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement and rescind resolution number 2017-499, originally approved on June 26, 2017.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
That item's carrying. Number five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on request by PNH LLC to vacate, sell, and convey a portion of East San Martin Drive right away adjacent to 121, 129, or 121 through 129 East Tower Park Drive.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Drive right away adjacent to 121, 129, or 121 through 129 East Tower Park Drive.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for this project?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd Obedal, 124 Amity Drive. As I'm reading the documentation here on the, online, it, it informs me that we've gone through the process of 306.23, and therefore, the city can do what it wishes with the property. My point of information is, under what code does it allow us to sell it as we wish and not put it up for public bidding for everyone and not just the adjacent abutting owners?
Is there your only question on this one, sir?
Yes, I have a, that's my only question.
All right. No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I don't recall the code number exactly, but it's the state code of Iowa that preserves or spells out city property powers. One of those is sale of property. After we have gone through 306.23, we can sell it through the normal sale of property policy, which does not require us to have to put it out for public bid. We deal with interested property owners and abutting property owners under the sale of property policy for the City of Waterloo.
All right, Mr. Obedal?
Yes, 306.23 says that if an offer which equals or exceeds the amount of the, of the stated value of the land, if no offers are received within the 60 days exceeding the fair market value of the land, the agency shall transfer the land for a public purpose or proceed with the sale of the property. State code says a city may not dispose of an interest in real property by sale, lease of a term more than three years, except in accordance with going through a resolution process where that resolution process is made public for four days. By going into 306.23, it does not circumvent the requirement to get out of the legal process of selling, of selling the property. We cannot be in a situation where we put a price on something, and since we don't get the market value price on it, then we can sell it to whomever for a dollar. This is to protect the taxpayers of Waterloo from not getting fair value for their property. There needs to be a public hearing on, on the proposal. There needs to be, there needs to be open bidding in accordance with state law on this, and I object to the sale taking place because state law has not been followed in this case. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. If you would like.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So, we are at the hearing. The, we set a data hearing 10 days ago, so it has been out there for the required four days. We are able to sell it for the $1 because it meets the sale of property policy, which by development agreement, Dr. Robbie will be putting an extensive amount of improvements to expand his business in Waterloo, and the amount of taxes generated on this will more than cover the appraised price of it within a short timeframe.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this particular item, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, the hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance approving a request to vacate a portion of East San Martin Drive right away located adjacent to 121 through 129 East Park Drive, East Tower Park Drive.
All right. The motion is complete now. Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor, could we just have an overview, and then also I would question the timeliness of the development?
Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Dr. Robbie is here in the audience today. If you have any specific questions to the project, essentially, they are improving the backside of the building to increase their parking availability on the site to the, to allow for the expansion of their project and their business in the area. They're seeing a great number of customers. We are in the middle of the construction season, so time is of the essence so that they can beat the weather and go ahead and get the improvements underway.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times when adopt said ordinance.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
That item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing sale and conveyance of a portion of East San Martin Drive right away located adjacent to 129 through 121 through 129 East Park, East Tower Park Drive to P&amp;H LLC in the amount of $1 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take six, seven, and eight, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving submission of grant application for a fiscal year 2017 Historic Preservation Fund Underrepresented Communities Grant from the National Park Service in the amount of $50,000 to perform a national register survey of the Triangle District and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute all necessary documents. Number seven is a resolution approving extension of a moratorium for a period of three months ending October 31, 2017, on the issuance of a special permit or license for the establishment of any new recycling junk or salvage yards. Number eight is a resolution approving acceptance of the U.S. Department of Transportation and Federal Aviation Administration Grant Number 3-19-0094-045-2017 in the amount of $2,655, or $2,655,686 for the pavement reconstruction of Taxiway Charlie pavement joint seal repair and crack seal maintenance of runway 12-12/30 and airfield painting improvements project at the Waterloo Regional Airport and authorize mayor, city attorney, and airport director to execute said documents.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Questions about any of these three items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We could have a little overview on item number seven.
No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. The City of Waterloo adopted a moratorium on any new salvage yards approximately a year ago. We have been working on improvements and modifications to the zoning ordinance. We had some requests from some of the existing salvage yard owners to adopt our ordinance to include portions of the state's iCare program, which actually brings forth a lot of recycling activities and proper methods. So, we've been kind of cross-referencing the two as to how we put it in zoning ordinance form versus what the iCare program contains for its requirements to be a member. We have that very close to form to present back to the Planning Commission and eventually to the City Council. We'd like to actually have some meetings with some existing salvage yard operators first, so we're asking for a couple more months before that moratorium ends to hopefully bring it to the Planning Commission in August or September.
Thank you.
Any other questions about these three items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make a comment relative to salvage yards or recycling yards in general. Ward three has had issues in the past with salvage yards attempting to start up in that area. In Ward three, especially the Broadway airline highway corridors, and from the public that lives in those areas, they are against the establishment of any future salvage yards in that area. A moratorium for another year would be fine. Extending it year after year would be fine by me.
No. All right, so, all right, any other comments about these three items? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Someone take nine, 10, and 11, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lind?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving memorandum of understanding between Intercog and the City of Waterloo of grant writing services related to a REIT grant application not to exceed $200,000, be used in Castle Bluff Park improvements, and authorize the mayor to execute said documents on behalf of the City of Waterloo. And I move to authorize resolution authorizing submission of a resource enhancement and protection REIT grant application not to exceed $200,000 for improvements to Castle Bluff's Park and authorize mayor to execute said document. And I moved to adopt a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Game Time Care of Cunningham Recreation, Charlotte, North Carolina, at a total cost of $43,992.41 in conjunction with fiscal year 2017 Highland Park Playground Project.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions about these three items? Sir?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. This Castle Bluff Park improvement, do I understand correctly, we're going to pay Intercog $200,000 to write the grant? And that brings up the question, and what is the total cost of the Castle Bluff Park improvement without the grant?
Paul Etting, Leisure Services Director. No, Intercog would have the lesser of no fee. If we don't get the grant, they won't charge us anything. If we do, it's one and a half percent, up to $1,000, I believe. It's in the documents. One of you can probably read it, because I don't have it right here, but it's, it's a minimal fee. The $200,000 would be for the entire project, and that would be paid for if we're successful with the state grant money from REIT.
So, are they getting $200,000 for this?
No, they would get either nothing if the grant is not successful, or in your counsel packet, I specified. Thank you. One and a half percent up to $3,000. Thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you.
I guess my concern there is that, that we, we pay for people to write grants, and we have someone that I read on their bio has grant writing ability. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that has comments about nine, 10, or 11, going a second time? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, those items carry. 12, 13, and 14, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a customer agreement with GATSO USA Incorporated of Beverly, Massachusetts for a fee of $36 per paid citation for ATE Automated Traffic Enforcement Services to the City of Waterloo and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number 13, a resolution accepting a donation of property from Wells Fargo to the City of Waterloo Community Development for property generally described as 418 Lane Street with a $15,000 seller concession slash cash contribution to assist with asbestos removal and demolition costs. And 14, a resolution approving a ward of contract to Lodge Construction Incorporated in Clarksville, Iowa in the amount of $39,792.70 and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the fiscal year 2018 Ash Street Drainage Improvements Contract Number 936 and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Questions about these three items, anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I got a call today from a gentleman who's confused about the cameras. He was asking me if I would ask Mr. Trelka if he would explain one more time what these cameras are all about.
Dan Trelka, Chief of Police. These cameras are for automated traffic enforcement. They're cameras that are utilized by our department to issue traffic citations. We've identified 13 intersections with traffic signals in the city where we have high crash data. We want to put cameras at six of them. We also get frequent complaints throughout the community about speeders. We would acquire a speed trailer so that we could set the speed trailer in these neighborhoods where we get complaints and in school zones to issue citations. We'd also acquire three handheld units that the officers could utilize in the enforcement of these violations. From my personal experience, I have gotten three of these tickets, and when I'm in those communities, I tend to drive a lot more cautiously than I do in other communities. That's the sad reality.
Chief, can I ask you a question too? Mr. Nathan, did you have any questions about any?
Is there anybody else up here right now?
All right, yes, sir.
Jim Chama, 224 Birch. Again, I'm here opposing the red light cameras. I had conversations with people from Cedar Rapids this weekend, and they do not like their traffic cameras in Cedar Rapids. And if you take a look at Edley and Center Point and Mount Vernon, people are leaving Cedar Rapids, not only for the cameras, but the crime. And I, again, say I think we ought to put the cameras in the high-crime areas instead of the red light cameras, because this gentleman had a camera in his house, and he caught a bicycle going off his porch. And if we had, and the police know where all the bad areas are and who the bad guys are, and let's put the cameras there and get rid of the bad people, let's make Waterloo a better place to live and get rid of the, the people that are committing the crimes, not this little old lady that's going to accidentally go through a red light. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Wayne Nathan, 548 Cloverdale, Waterloo, Iowa. My biggest concern is this, with this, is with any area, are they really for safety or are they for revenue? And I feel like they're more for revenue than what they are for safety. Maybe about 25% could be safety, 75% is for revenue, and therefore, I'm not 100% for all this. And I give the mayor some information earlier prior to the council meeting and so forward to read. I would like to see you, I don't know, how many more times will this come up for reading?
Twice, right, tonight and then next week.
Two more times?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I think we need to take a different look at this, because in areas that they've had these, the company has sat there and dictated how long the yellow lights could be. They don't care how long the green light, how long the red light, they've dictated how long the yellow light could be, and the short duration of that yellow light takes and generates more revenue for the city, also for the people that's putting these up. And they're going to take care of their stockholders. And the more the tickets, the more revenue they make, too.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Nathan, the ordinance, 17 and 18, has a reading tonight, and then potentially next Monday is, Monday as well, the next council meeting. And what you're looking at right here is the resolution to work with the company, but you asked me a question outside, and who controls the yellow lights? Who controls that timeframe?
The city does, Mayor. It'll be our traffic engineers that dictate the length of that.
So that won't change to the company?
No.
We still operate that. And that was one of the questions, one of the questions, and I do have a document downstairs for the both of you that Mr. Nathan had given, and I'll get those to you in the morning.
Mr. Mayor?
Mister, we got a person from the public, I believe, going to speak, and then we'll come to counsel, so let's take convo from the public. Thank you, Mr. Nathan.
Good evening, Councilman. My name's Don Scher, 1415 Downing Avenue. Here some time ago, when we were talking about security cameras for businesses, I dropped off some information for you, Mr. Mayor, about not only security cameras, but red light cameras. The problem I have with this is if you put these up, you still can't collect the fines because the fines are unenforceable. And this is being found in courts all over the country. So if you put these up and you fine people for running red lights or fine them for speeding without an officer being involved, you can't collect the fines. You can't do anything to anybody for it, so what's the point?
All right. Do you have any more questions for us, Mr. Shear?
No, sir, that was it.
Collecting the fines?
There are mechanisms in place to collect them, Mayor, and if the person doesn't pay the fine, we can, there are, as a matter of fact, one thing we can do is issue a regular citation, do an investigation, determine who was driving, and issue a citation that would include court cost. The company also engages in actions they can take to recover the fines, and they have a very impressive success ratio.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
One of the tools that these companies use is to call people and threaten to ding their credit if they don't pay these tickets. And this has been ruled illegal, too, so they can't do that anymore. I guess if you're going to do this, hey, you're going to do whatever you want to do anyway, but if you're going to do this, at least research a little bit and make sure that the city can collect these fines. And if they can't collect these fines, is this company that has these cameras, are they going to still want money? Because they're not doing this for free. So if a guy gets a ticket, he doesn't pay the fine, does the city still have to pay their half? That's all I have. Thank you.
That's another good question, Chief. Do we, are we paying anything out of our pockets?
No, sir.
Right now, this is all, and do they get paid if they, if it's not, not, the money's not given?
The contract is for each paid citation, $36 for each paid citation.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't think to talk to you. So...
Okay.
This is on number 13, David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street.
All right, thank you, Chief.
418 Lane Street. What is the cost of asbestos removal and demo of that property? And I guess I'd like to know that answer before I ask my second question about it.
Yeah, then, no. Rudy's not here this evening.
Bill Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. We believe that the cost of asbestos removal, testing, and demolition would be covered by the $15,000.
Okay, that sounds less expensive than I expected it to be. So that was the other question I had, was the $15,000 going to cover it? Otherwise, why would we want to get a free property and then have to spend extra money on it? So if the $15,000 covers it, as Mr. Anderson had said, I'll hold him to that. Thank you.
All right. What was your estimate?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't do that sort of thing.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
We have another person.
I wanted to go back to the cameras. You said there are 13 observation points.
Ms. Stevens, we need you to identify yourself and address.
I'm the same person I was when I came up here. Terry Stevens, 1629 Ackerman Street, Waterloo, Iowa. I would like information, I think that's so redundant and you waste so much time, but anyway, that's another matter. I'd like to know where the six of them are that you are thinking about doing for the cameras? What neighborhoods are they in?
13 intersections have been identified by crash data as being prom intersection. We're meeting tomorrow. As a matter of fact, our committee is getting together, includes a traffic engineer, one of my police captains, to identify which one of these 13 should have cameras. They tend to be in our business districts, downtown, La Porte Road in Sandmarn, University in Ainsborough, quite frankly, predominantly white neighborhoods. None of these cameras would be in predominantly African-American neighborhoods.
Is it, is it more or less high-traffic-volume areas?
It's driven by the crash data. Yes, sir.
Because I have a question on whether or not there should be cameras placed here in front of the seat of government. Last year, I was in a car accident right outside this building, and I could not get information on who was at fault, even though I knew I was not at fault, because I was told that there's no camera at the front of City Hall. Is that true, point of information?
Is there a camera at the front?
I don't know if there is. There's definitely cameras in the back, that pan, but in the front, I don't believe there is a pan camera even.
I think that this city being, you know, this is the seat of government. There should be cameras surrounding this entire building, and particularly when a police officer tells me that, well, I'm not going to find fault with anybody because I can't prove who was there. Well, if you had cameras, you could prove who was there and who did it. And my only concern, you answered that, was I did not want to see cameras throughout the northeast side of Waterloo as prevalent, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief, while you're up there, going back to item number 12, where does the city's portion of these fines, where is that money going to go?
It'll go into the general fund, and like I said, I would ultimately like to acquire three more officers based on the revenue from this program, but I don't want to even talk about it until the money's in the bank, until we see what this program can do. So hiring three more officers and tax relief is where I'd like to see money go.
Well, the only reason I ask that is for Mr. Nathan, that I know there's a concern in the community that this is just all about the money, and if, if in fact, the money is designated for hopefully tax relief, but whatever, and it's very public and very transparent, then that should be part of the conversation. But, so at what point in time are you going to identify that?
I'd say give us a year. Give us 10 months to a year to see what this program can do, look at our crash data, look at how much revenue is being generated, and discuss it from there.
So that money would just be put in a fund for that 10 months or one year?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr., we'll go with Mr. Morrissey, and then we'll go with Mr. Amos. He's been waiting a while.
Okay, the first thing I was wondering is, is it even appropriate to have number 12 on the agenda, or should it be tabled until after we see if we're going to approve the third reading on number 17? Shouldn't we approve that first before we make any kind of agreement for money? Otherwise, aren't we locking ourselves into something that possibly could get beat?
My answer to that would be it doesn't need to be signed until after, until the third reading has occurred.
So, just, yeah, it is kind of cart before the horse, but if this does not pass, 17 and 18, we have not signed the contract. We don't have to sign the contract, correct?
Correct.
And I'm just saying, isn't it more proper to wait and have this after we've approved the third reading? That's, as you said, putting the cart before the horse. You know, and I would make a motion, I mean, is there any urgency, Chief Trelka, to get this number 12 passed tonight?
There is not. The one thing I will bring to the next meeting is a fine schedule.
Okay. Yeah, I just would like to make a motion to table this and pending outcome of the ordinance.
Second.
All right, motion to table item number 12.
Wait, Dan.
Start making you ask your questions up front, too. So there's a, because you got a motion to table.
Yes, yes.
Number 12. If there's a motion to table and counsel agrees, then we don't have any more conversation on this.
Well, I did have a question about, being that it's on there, I want, my second question was, the fee is $36, and what is, what does GATSO get from other communities that have the red light? Because in the documents that I've read, it said our fee would be, or the violation fee, the municipal infraction fee would be $60 to $70.
Dan, as a point of reference, you made a motion to table this, so once we table, he already indicated that they will come back with the fee schedule at some point. If you would like him to take a look at comparison with other cities so that you can make a decision that the council can make for the fee schedule, you can, you can ask at that time or some other time.
That'd be fine.
But right now, there's a motion to table until after 17 and 18 have been approved. Mr. Amos, is there a question?
Yes, there's a question. No, there's not a question about the table. This was a question that, for me, it was a question about the cameras themselves.
Right.
And it was a question as far as the actual red light speeding. I seem to remember something about it wouldn't be picking up on the speeding part of it, just the red light, is that correct?
Well, we have a motion to table right now.
Okay.
That we need to adhere to, that was made by your colleague, Mr. Morrissey.
Well...
So we have a conversation about the motion to table until after. He did mention earlier that there would be a speeding gun, there would also be the purchase of a speeding cart or something as such.
I'm talking about the camera itself.
So let's table, because he made the motion to table, I think we need to stick to that. So get on, Mr. Morrissey, after the meeting. So there is a motion to table. Any comments or questions about the motion to table this item? And will you want it to after, a week after, or when the third reading comes up?
Whenever the third reading is completed.
All right. So that, is there any questions about that? Madam Clerk, about the table?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
No.
All right, so, does that, does that, does that table pass? So there's a motion to table, and it's passed. We also have items number 13 and 14 we need to vote on, so Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, those items carry. Could someone take 15 and 16, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item 15 is adopting a resolution approving reconstruction and overlay street improvement lists for 2018, and number 16 is adopting a resolution approving subrecipient agreements with the University of Northern Iowa Foundation in the amount of $43,500, Blue Zones in the amount of $55,000, and Tri-County Head Start in the amount of $1,500 for the Healthy H2O Lou Project, and authorizing Mayor and City Clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions about these two items?
Cheryl Christensen, 1702 East Mitchell. Why are we paying Blue Zones $55,000?
This actually came through from a grant, so it's passed, so we're not, the city's technically not giving them any money. This is from a national grant.
Is this a one-time thing, or is this additional money that is going to be a continuation?
No, this is just a one-time, $100,000 grant.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so could you or Ms. Wheaton or somebody maybe amplify that item number 16 again?
So the, the, the City of Waterloo and Blue Zones and Wheaton had worked to write a grant for Healthy H2O Lou Program. This program helps to give schoolchildren more healthier choices for food. It deals with offering people information about healthy choices. It works with the collaboration of different entities within the community to focus on exercise and overall health and well-being. It was awarded by the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and it is working with those that may not have the resources. For instance, there's a veggie voucher program through Wheaton Franciscan because some people in our community don't have the means to be able to afford fresh food and healthier choices, so this helps people with all those areas. It helps with some community gardens and all those things mixed into this.
So this is the $100,000 from six weeks ago or something like that?
When Crystal, Crystal Swan from the Conference of Mayors came and did a presentation downtown. But yeah, it was a successful grant written by them, but it has to pass through here for us to be able to give it to them.
How does that involve the UNI Foundation? I guess I'm not following the process or something.
UNI Foundation is in conjunction with Wheaton Franciscan as well, and they have a portion of it. It should be in the communication.
Well, I know... A little bit with that technicality, the UNI Foundation is serving as the fiscal agent for the fruit and veggie voucher program for Wheaton Franciscan, so they will disburse the funds to eligible individuals.
So we get the money, we pass it through, and then they manage it, basically?
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Cheryl Christensen, 1702 East Mitchell.
We normally don't allow...
Only one time? Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lynn?
On the attachments, the City of Waterloo is getting $5,000 out of, out of some of this money? Or is it, is this the deal here? There's another attachment shows water, that we get five, or maybe $3,000 out of the deal.
The city is not directly retaining any funds?
That kind of confused me. Well, on the...
There, if you add up the three, UNI Foundation will be handling $43,700.
Okay, well, it's gone now. It was on the, no, here it is, right here. It says...
The only $3,000 I'm aware of is there's for public education.
Says proposed budget allocation. Tri-County, Wheaton, City of Waterloo, Blue Zones.
Could you correct that if it is?
It's, there's nothing coming to Waterloo. If you add up the three amounts in the resolution, you have $55,000, I believe it's $55,000 to Blue Zones.
This is the deal we're doing.
We can correct it, yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, this, this must have been just...
Whatever it is, it is there, let's correct it.
Yeah.
But what we're voting on is the allocation, so, good catch. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, item 17, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion, receive file, consider and pass for the second time, and ordinance amending the 2007 City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by enacting a new Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter I Traffic Code by adding Section IV Automated Traffic Enforcement.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Questions?
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. Is this also connected with the cameras, this automatic enforcement?
Yes, sir.
And I guess I got a question. What happens if you, I see a lot of cars running around with no license plate on the front of the car. I've seen quite a few of them around. How do you, how does that camera pick that up, sir?
Mr. Trelka?
This will become one piece of the puzzle for our overall camera system that we envision in the city. And the red light cameras take photos of the rear license plate, not having a front license plate. The handheld units, it's going to be an officer operating that handheld unit. If he observes a car that he indicates, or that he can tell that it's speeding, he can pull it over for the violation of not having a front license plate.
So that is the state code, to have two license plates on your vehicle?
Yes.
One in front, one in back. And also, I keep hearing safety, but the word that really comes to mind out of this whole conversation keeps being revenue. And I've read in the paper where it was going to lower my taxes, and I don't think that this is going to lower my taxes, one bet, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. When I was in the military in Germany, I got out of Germany in 1972. They already had the cameras, and the actual, the camera actually took the front of the vehicle and your smiling face behind the wheel. Why do we go to the back end of the car and then we can't prove who was driving it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other questions? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just going back to the whole idea, I guess, quick question, and maybe a longer question. The quick question is, how long is the contract that we're going to sign on this? If it doesn't work out, can we get out of it? Is it a year or two years or whatever it is? I guess, secondly, just doing a little research on this, and, you know, maybe a Trinzelhofer could shed some light on this for us, but is this legal? Can we enforce it? If we can't enforce it, then I think, you know, we should maybe question this. According to this, and maybe we could look into this and get maybe a next... According to this, and maybe we could look into this and get maybe next week or so and talk about it, but the Sixth Amendment's confrontation clause gives the accused the right to be confronted by witnesses against them. With the cameras, the driver is never confronted by a police officer ticketing them. The accused are not being provided with the opportunity to cross-examine or subpoena all camera equipment operators along with anyone who handled the evidence or the officer who issued the citation, nor are they being provided with the opportunity to examine the design and operation of the equipment itself. So, I know, I know the workaround is the handheld device. I guess that's what makes it legal. So, I could see that, because an officer can say, you know, "I caught Tom speeding, and here's your ticket, sir." But Tom would never speed, but, but I guess my question then really is, to be serious about this, if we have a camera in the sky, we issue tickets off of that, can we enforce that as us just technology issuing a ticket as opposed to an officer here that we, that we trust?
So, is it enforceable? Hey, Chief, the, the company, which this is, that portion is table right now, but do they make presentations to communities as well on certain things that they may be able to do?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, there's a representative here tonight, and they will help inform the community and answer questions of the community.
So, the, the challenge is that was tabled, so it's no longer possibly... The ordinance, so, talking about the enforcement, can that be the conversation?
Mr. President, the ordinance is...
Yeah, if they want to talk about enforcement, and what was another portion of the question?
Oh, just how long is the contract that we're getting ourselves into? If it doesn't work out, is there a clause to get us out of it?
So, if you can have a representative talk about the enforcement portion of it. And then, did you, on the, I didn't even check, did you, was there the contract inside here?
Yes.
It has a length of time on there as well?
Three years.
Three years, okay.
And there are opt-out options.
All right, so if we can have the company representative talk a little bit about this opportunity, and is it enforceable and the legalities around that?
Hello, Dorian Grubal, 911 Banburg Drive, Mainville, Ohio. I represent GAZO USA in this matter.
Are you an Iowa Hawkeyes fan or Ohio State?
I don't really follow Iowa football unless they're, and I won't even say playing Ohio State, because I'm not there, I'm more, my family's all from the West Coast, so Washington...
Everyone else you cheer for, I'm sorry about that. Thank you, but you want to address the councilman's questions?
Yes, to, to address the first, the legality, as of right now, it is completely legal with the passage of, of an ordinance within municipalities, it's been upheld, unless the state changes that. And as far as we know, through lobbyists and through other avenues within the state, that's not something they have been looking to pass more of. You might see a regulatory bill in the upcoming session, but as of right now, it is legal. The contract has stipulations if there, if it's ever found not to be lawful anymore or anything of that nature, then the contract automatically terminates at that juncture. Also, if we do anything out of the ordinary, then you can terminate the contract immediately. As far as the regulatory and everything, the, the city is in complete control of the program. The company does not make any decisions as far as was talked about before, yellow light times, red light times. We don't even tap into those wires. All we do is monitor when power goes to the yellow light and the red light with each of our violations that will be approved by the police department sent out. The police department will see it as well as the violator will see in their data bar with the violation, the exact yellow light time, the green light time, and the red light time. So, they'll see that in the violation as well as two still photographs, a zoom-in image of the license plate, and 12 seconds of video of the violation.
Just a follow-up question then, a couple of follow-up questions. Will this ticket affect someone's driving record? And secondly, how do you, then, do you, and how do you collect on this ticket? Does your company collect on it for us?
No. It will not affect driving records. Camera tickets, automated traffic enforcement through camera technology is all civil in all states. So, therefore, when you're talking about the codes that require the uniformed officer or whatever, that, for a criminal ticket, absolutely. For a civil ticket, as of right now, that liability falls on the registered owner of the vehicle. They do have the opt-out when they get a violation to transfer that liable, liability to the actual driver, and then the violation would be get, would be reissued to that driver. What was the second half of your question?
So, as far as collecting, so the individual knows it doesn't affect their driving record, so they just don't pay it. How do you collect on that?
Well, we don't actually, as a company, do the collections. We do work with a couple of collections agencies that are specific to municipal government that we recommend, but they would take on...
So, then it would affect someone's credit rating, credit report?
It could if the city decided to go to collections on those. We, as a company, don't make phone calls and harass people or...
So, you would turn that out?
Or make that decision even to go to collections. That's the city's decision. We will talk about your options and what you can do within the laws of Iowa, but we don't specifically do something without the authorization of the city.
But potentially, it could be turned over to a credit reporting agency, a credit or a collection agency, which then could affect someone's credit report?
Correct, if they don't pay. There's first given, there's a, there's three, there's usually three notices sent out, and then the city would make the determination at whatever process, whether they want to turn it over to collections or not, or to seek other relief. And that's what has been done across the state so far.
Other questions?
Just a quick question. It's been brought up that companies such as yours change the yellow light timing.
No.
Is that, do you guys touch them, or is it still under the control?
I've read the same things. I know I've read stories about a couple of our competitors who have been caught manipulating yellow light times, but no, as a matter of fact, we work with an electrical company out of Cedar Rapids that would handle their IMSA Level Two qualified, install coils over your red light and yellow light wires in the traffic box. So, they don't even tap into them. We're not, we're not actually physically altering anything in the traffic box. All we're doing is monitoring electrical current that goes to the yellow wire, to the yellow light and the red light. And all that does is trigger it and starts our clock so we can actually give, not only the, the city, but the violator, the exact time the light was red, yellow, and green. And we don't decide any of those times.
And our traffic division follows federal regs on that, that there's a timeframe that's there, and we'll follow the yellow lights and versus red lights, right? Okay. The second thing, do you guys do business in Chicago?
We do business in Illinois. We do not do Chicago.
Okay. There was a big article about Chicago.
Yes, no, we didn't, we're, we're not affiliated with the City of Chicago or the things that have gone on in the past there. We do, do smaller communities around the Chicago area in Illinois.
Okay.
Also, to talk about the speed, the cameras are monitoring speed, the red lights. They're not issuing violations, but they gather that data for the police department so that they have speed data, so that not only when you run a red light, do they know that you ran the red light or the red and yellow light times, but they'll also know the speed of the vehicle. It's also why we recommend, in regards to safety, which we've recommended to the police department, as far as right turns on red, right turn on red, we recommend, as a company, and we've recommended it to the police department, that a ticket's not issued unless a vehicle making a right turn on red is doing 15 or more, because anything under is not a safety hazard.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
How do you deal with cars that go through a red light that have a dealer's license plate on it or, or have just a paper kind of issue on the back window?
You mean the temporary tag?
Yeah.
I know in the past, a lot of times, sometimes temporary tags, I mean, the information can be gotten for the police department. It just depends, because a lot of times they're reregistered within that short timeframe. So, we would, we would talk to the police to see what they wanted to do with those as well as dealer tags, whether they wanted the information addressed themselves or just send out notices to either the temp tag or the dealership itself.
All right, any other questions, counsel? Madam, thank you. Madam Clerk? You? Yes, sir. You got to come to the podium, state your name and address, and let us know what you're thinking.
Hi, my name is Rick Brem, 426 Yurik Street, Waterloo, Iowa. Question I have, will this be issuing tickets to, on yellow lights or for running the red light?
Red lights.
Red. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right, we'll bring forth that form with the final reading on August 7. I believe that's the... All right.
Do we have four yeses? I'm so confused. Wait, 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 how many yeses do we have? You have four yeses?
Yes.
Does that pass?
Yes.
So, motion suspended.
We're suspending the rules.
Oh, wow.
You got six.
No, you got, suspend the rules. Yeah, we needed six.
You got six.
Well, that explains it, doesn't it?
I'm moving on to the next one.
I'm still trying to figure out the four that voted. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
This done.
Keep in track of this now, the four?
Let's let it go.
He's with me.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the third time and adopt an ordinance amending the 2007 City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by amending Title Five Police Regulations, Chapter Five Chronic Nuisance Properties, Section One Definitions by adding O fireworks to definitions.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made with the second. We've had plenty of discussion about this the last couple of weeks. Anyone out there? Yes, sir.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I was just wondering how we are going to enforce this ordinance when we got a chronic nuisance ordinance right now, and it seems like every time that we write it, or get a property, it goes over here to the courthouse, the judge throws it out. So, I don't think that our chronic nuisance property that we have in enforcement right now is really working. I, I don't see it. I know that there's an address that, I got an email that the person was getting evicted. I go by there every day and, under chronic nuisance ordinance, and they're still being occupied, so I don't think it's working. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief? In your swat's end tonight?
The ordinance is working great. I proceeded against 29 properties under this ordinance, and only one has the judge dismissed the citation. The abatement plans are coming in generally. We do have one problem address right now where the case is pending, but we have one conviction in regard to that address. We have the second offense of it pending right now. The officers are very pleased with this ordinance. I think this ordinance is responsible for driving our calls for service down about 15 to 20 percent, and that saves the city money. No, we're not making a lot of money by billing these addresses, but this has been a very successful ordinance.
It's hard to put a price on a good night's sleep if you're next door to one of them, so. All right, any other questions? Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Lawrence Wheeler, 433 Bradton Over. I would like to be able to see this fireworks situation taken care of because it is a chronic problem, but also too, over the last few years, I've had damage to my property because my house that I occupy was built in the 1800s, and the foundation doesn't go exactly deep as, as code requires. And the thing of it is, is that something needs to be done about the fireworks that they discharged at Buck Stadium. They've used a lot of concussion-type devices, especially what they... And what's going on is, I, I, you know, would have problems with what they call harmonic vibration. When it comes to having things like in the china cabinet, it rattles. I've had, had enough shock wave from fireworks at Buck Stadium to actually crack some of my glass windows and storm windows. It's mortar cannons, yeah, mortar cannons. They need to ban the mortar cannons from the fireworks display, because when they fire those off, it just, it, it feels like a 0.1 earthquake, because the, my original stone foundation, it, it can't handle the, the shock wave.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I've also, I've also noticed from the shock waves, I've, I've been getting some foundation cracking.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Are there any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, like to move to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Mr. City Attorney, are we doing this the right way?
We are, Dave Zellafer, City Attorney. We are discussing the purchase of property by the city, and that does fall within the requirements of the statute.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, we are in exact session.